This Town Hall meeting of the Fairfield Board of Education, April 30th, 2019, is called to order. Present, we have Ms. Pitko, Ms. Lieber, Mr. Dwyer, Mrs. Gerber, myself, Mrs. Vitale, Mr. Asa, Mrs. Jacobson, Mrs. Maxicanelli, Mr. Peterson, and we're joined tonight by Selectman, Mr. Ed Bateson, who will be our moderator. I will ask you all to please rise for the pledge, and Mr. Bateson, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you all for coming. This is our Town Hall. It's a chance for you all to come up and ask questions of the board and for us to have a real dialogue and conversation. I'm going to turn the control of the meeting over to Mr. Bateson. When you come up, I'm just going to ask that you all please state your name and address for the record, and, Mr. Bateson, I, and please sign in. Thank you, Mrs. Maxicanelli.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you. My name's Ed Bateson, Board of Selectmen. We're going to kick the evening off. Just to take a temperature of the room, let's have an estimate of how many people feel like talking tonight. If you could just raise your hand, trying to get a sense of time management. Okay. I'm not see, I'm thinking right now we go 10 minutes. If the evening starts to drag on, we'll go to five. Does that seem reasonable?
Per person?
Per person, yes. Or do you want to go to five?
We don't, um, why don't we start with five, and we'll see how it goes. Some people might be less and kind of take it from there.
Okay, we'll do it that way. The first person come up, please sit down, give your name and address, and please sign the sheet. Okay, motion to adjourn.
Come on up.
Hello, everybody. Okay. My name is Jeri Ann Mitchell. I'm a teacher at the Early Childhood Center. Our concern going forward, or our question, is about the decision-making process. We're hoping that all decisions will be mindfully made. That's okay. Is that better? We just always want to reiterate, we've had your support, we appreciate your support, and we always feel that the ECC is stronger together, and we respectfully request that the ECC being kept together is considered going forward. You know, we are concerned that we outgrew our space in 2011, and we weren't added to the facilities list then, nor in 2016 when they opened a second classroom, nor in 2017 when they opened the classroom in Stratfield. So this resulted in the immediate crisis this fall for additional space. Given the parameters, accessibility, playground, bathroom, classroom, air conditioning, the short-term decision to open four additional classrooms at Stratfield was made, the short-term solution was then a surprise to us all when it became a five-to-10-year solution. When we're looking at the estimated growth as per the budget of an additional 56 students next year, is there a plan to accommodate growth going forward, especially in relation to the switch to a 50-50 ratio going forward? Again, our concern becomes that there's now a discussion on the table about relocating ECC Ward as well. Given the history of ECC having been moved in the past as each school it was located in grew in size and needed their space back, you know, it's our personal concern with Stratfield, given the potential growth of the program, and the current desirability of the Stratford Village, and the possibility of relocating Ward as well. You know, at the February 27th Board of Ed meeting, Mr. Asay noted that rather than closing out elementary, you would see it, you would rather see it repurposed as an ECC going forward, and we're respectfully requesting that you consider that going forward. When we're looking at the current ADA checklist of drop-off, pickup, elevator access, internal steps, is a concern that we'd like you to really reflect on going forward. You know, when we look at the size of the elementary school, we look at the distance between the locations, you know, as well as physical steps, the depth of a step, and possible impact on transition. You know, when we're looking at children with motoric delays, small legs, or kids that are just learning how to walk because they're delayed, these factors need to be considered. There are also kids with stamina issues or behavioral challenges that make transitions hard. When you look at the ECC, the current furthest difference from the OTPT room to the playground is about 110 feet. In contrast, at Stratfield, Alyssa's classroom to the playground is 130 feet, plus one flight of adult-sized steps with a higher handrail, one step outside with no handrail. The elevator from the furthest potential pre-K room next year will be close to 350 feet. The greatest distance proposed is a new pre-K classroom to the LLC, which is 300 feet to the furthest stairwell, two flights down, large steps with high handrails, and additional 75 feet to the pre-K carpeted area. So we are encouraged by your option for, in discussion of pre-K in a wing or clustering if possible going forward. You know, we also have staff that have visited the Westport preschool, which is a great because it's contained in a separate wing but within the elementary school. It's a great model. You know, we are definitely eager to be part of a welcoming community in the elementary schools. We're hopeful that the school climate will appreciate the novel concept for elementary schools, the impact of rolling enrollment. It is something that truly, until you live it, you really don't appreciate it. You have children starting all year long, which results in crying and turmoil and irregular. And when a kid has a meltdown, unfortunately, we work them through wherever they are. So if it's outside your classroom and you're testing, I really don't have the right to pick up that child and move it, so testing can go uninterrupted. So it's just all sort of these things that we're looking at. So we just want you to be mindful of it. We know that the Board of Ed's first priority is students and their education. Our goal is to maximize student learning to make them part of the community. We just respectfully ask that we be considered in the decision-making process. You know, we look forward to seeing the Early Childhood Center flourish, and we're just stronger together. So we're just wondering if there's any light on, or any information on Stratfield going forward, potential for growth, and what your plans for ECC Ward are going forward.
Thank you. Ms. Canelli.
Um, just one point that I would want to correct for the record from what you said is that the idea of short-term being five to 10 years, and that, just as a reminder, because I think you were at that meeting, that when Stratfield was proposed as the short-term solution, because in the next four meetings, we will be talking about, obviously, the ECC, and that is definitely something which you've done a great job of being here and advocating for, and I think you, I think you get the sense that we very much respect your voice.
Oh, totally.
But that when it was clarified as that could be five to 10 years, I think that was more of a definition of what short-term means, because the Board, I believe, reacted fairly quickly to that, saying, "We don't see this as being short-term defined as five to 10. This is definitely going to hold us for a year. It might be two years as we prepare for something after that." But I don't think there was any mood on the Board that 10 years from now, we would still be operating on a short-term solution. And then for the rest of it, I just, you know, obviously welcome your continued advocacy because I think it's been very helpful and very educational for the Board. Thank you.
Mr. Dwyer.
You mentioned a variety of practical issues around the space that we might be looking at, and I think you are well aware that on the district side, there are practical issues that we have, which, if you look at any school project that we've done, any substantial school project, it does take six, seven, eight years between the time that we say, "Yes, put it on the waterfall chart," and the time we open the space.
Mm-hmm.
And right now, the Early Childhood Center was designed for about 80 students.
Correct.
You've got about 160 there now.
Correct.
At the growth rate, we could easily see ourselves, I could easily see ourselves looking at 250 spots. If we're going to create something as a single facility, that would be a target number rather than 160 or whatnot. It's almost an elementary school.
Correct.
And so I share Mrs. Maxicanelli's concept that we're not, we don't have an appetite for having this last more than a year or two. But if we're trying to find a single facility that could be designed to 250 students, that I don't see happening in a year or two. I just don't. It may happen, but I think it would be very difficult to happen, so.
Mm-hmm.
I think we're in agree with the, with the concept of maintaining the quality, but at the moment, it strikes me that the two-facility option is where we are while we figure out if there are other options. And the idea of closing an elementary school so it could get repurposed, we're trading one group of parents.
Correct.
For another group of parents of equal sizes probably that would be mad at us, so, you know, and you don't, we don't like to pit one group against the others. So this is not an easy issue to solve, not by any stretch of the imagination.
Is there any plan to have like a committee going forward and getting people on the committee, or is it solely a facilities, Board of Ed, decision-making going forward?
Ms. Vitale.
There's currently not a plan for a committee going forward. We have not identified what the sites will be, long-term. Suggestions have been made by the staff. I think that many Board members have expressed an interest in going to visit those sites to look at some of the things that you kind of discussed, you know, is there a handrail? How many stairs? What's the distance from the elevator to the playground? And it's going to, as you know from sitting in the meetings, it's going to be taking place in the context of where there's space within elementary schools. I think it's a continued conversation as to whether or not the ECC will stay at Ward or if it will be into elementary schools, simply because if, it would be a different program.
Totally.
You know, it just, it would be difficult to offer the same services in an elementary school as opposed to in a specialized space. And I think that's a discussion that we really are going to be looking to the staff at the ECC for guidance as a Board, and also to the Special Education Department in terms of making sure that all preschoolers have equal access, and the curriculum and the delivery of services is equal, depend, regardless of where, where you are.
The need for the continuum of service irrespective of location.
Ms. Jacobson.
Is there a sentiment right now, Ms. Hassan, is there a sentiment or preference as for Ward plus one elementary school versus two elementary schools and not Ward? Just, just out of, just for your, just for input purposes.
Out of our perspective, Ward is always great because it is solely child-centered. It is, you have that flexibility to kind of work with the child. You know, there are some benefits from being in elementary, but at this point in time, there are more perceived drawbacks with children with long-term memories. Oh, that's the kid that cried for three weeks. That's the kid that used to bolt in the hall. You know, I understand that we kind of look at bullying and all of that, but it's really hard when kids have long-term memories. You know, like what we need to do sometimes can be perceived by older children, "Oh, my gosh, that's the kid that's crying. That's the kid that's always running." You know, we feel that we have an amazing program, and we can be more responsive in the self-contained setting than we can or will be able to be when we're in an elementary where there's other kids in the hall, where there's people passing by what you're doing, where there's people who don't understand sometimes what you're doing, when you're sitting there waiting a child out in the hallway who's crying, and you're just like, "Why don't you just pick him up and go?" Kind of thing. So I think the personal.
So your preference, just personally, would be Ward plus one?
I think as a staff, based on what we've presented to you all along, and you guys have been very receptive to it, is staying together as one site. You know, like if we were to be in an elementary, to have that sort of Westport model where you're a wing, where you do have more of the separation as far as like children in the hall. So if you're walking down the hall and there's a bunch of sixth graders and the fifth graders in the hall, they're a lot bigger, you know.
I just wanted to get a sense on your sentiment for Ward, but thank you so much.
Yes.
Is that it from the?
Well, okay. Just one reminder, you asked about the parent, the input of groups, and that, correct me if I'm wrong, but they did have focus groups with all staff members at both sites. So I'm not saying that that's, that should be the end-all, be-all, but just as a reminder that we have requested that and gotten that input, and it's been reported on, so.
Correct.
So again, we're just.
We're just hoping that continues going forward. That's all.
Okay.
I saw the flashcard.
Sorry. I can read my visuals. Thank you.
Thank you. Name and address, and please sign in.
Frank Sahigian, 20 Chelsea Street in Fairfield. I don't want you guys to kick me off as you always do, so I'm just going to make sure I don't go too far, too long.
You're gonna, when it's time, we're gonna do it.
Right. So I watched the meeting about a month ago when you guys were talking about the discussion of centering around the reviewing of the guiding principles for redistricting, and agree this is really a good starting place, and I trust and hope you all would agree that it was really, it's far from comprehensive, and a lot more needs to be done before we can go to Malone and McBroom and give them some kind of parameters. And many of those principles were scrapped, and some of them were kept, but I think, if I remember correctly, you folks did say many said it was time for comprehensive, comprehensive redistricting. And I would hope that means we're looking at all the different levels, elementary, middle, and high school, all three. And if you recall, the last time we did this fully was about nine years ago when Woods was expanded to accommodate the expanded capacity at Woods. And I just want to just hear a little bit more about the parameters that are going to be used before we go to Malone and McBroom. Given the fact that we have 11 elementary schools, three middle schools, and two high schools, I'm assuming that the breakdown, or maybe I'm wrong to assume this, would be the same in that three elementary schools will go to Tomlinson, four will go to Woods, and four will go to Ludlow. And one of the things I saw was scrapped was about least amount of disruption. No longer was that one of the, one of the guiding principles, least amount of disruption. And I'm wondering whether or not we're prepared to draw the lines of the elementary boundaries so that they don't look like they currently look. As you folks well know, the, you know, the bowtie or whatever you want to call it, the butterfly at Jennings. Are we prepared to do that? And before we go to Malone and McBroom, will we be giving them parameters like we had last time, such as, more specifically, McKinley and Holland Hill not going to the same middle school for appropriate socioeconomic reasons? We'll not have a Singleton School of the four. So if you have four, four, and three, for instance, Tomlinson now all goes to one high school because you don't want to break up the middle school kids and have one group go to one high school and two go to the other. And the elephant in the room, which really created the Rubik's Cube last time, was the high school. And what determines where you go to high school? And currently, right now, it has been, as we all well know, is the elementary school. Has nothing to do with the middle school. And that was the parameter that put us over the top last time that resulted in us having to send kids from Stratfield down to Tomlinson, because we had so many parameters that had created a Rubik's Cube, and to try to satisfy all of those things, it virtually became impossible to do that. So that is the elephant in the room. I would love to hear some discussion or comments or how, what the process is going to be to determine how, what a comprehensive plan looks like, and whether or not that's something that's going to be on the table. Is that a public discussion, or is that going to be something in private about how the schools are going to be broken down? I mean, frankly, I think it's divisive for this town. Many people come to this town and say, you know, there's this perception that one school's, high school's better than another, which only divides the town. It frankly doesn't make sense, in my opinion, that an elementary school drive a high school. There's a lot of years in between, but that's what created the tremendous kind of craziness of the redistricting plan that we had last time. So that's three minutes and 40 seconds, so I'm done.
Thank you. Mr. Peterson.
Thanks for your, thanks for your comments. I'll leave it to the Chair to discuss plans for meetings and such. I, I've said this in a lot of emails that I've sent recently, I do have great hope that there will be much public input in the process as we go forward. You also mentioned whether we're having discussions kind of behind closed doors, and I have no interest in that. I have interest in doing everything at this table in public in the light of day, responding to as much public feedback as, as we can, listening, learning, adjusting. Again, that's, that's my take. There's kind of a lot to unpack in your, in your statement. One, one random thing that I would point out is that prior to Stratfield going to Tomlinson, it went to Roger Ludlow Middle School, so they were already going all the way across town. It's just things shifted around a little bit. So I, I, I think of all the Board members have been most kind of beating my, my fist about a comprehensive town-wide redistricting. I'm a Fairfield native. I've seen how much the districts have changed through the years, and I've also been through a couple of, as a spectator, bruising battles about where kids should go to. It's, it's not going to be easy. It's not going to be fun. Politically, it's going to be very difficult, but the more I look at the demographics of the issue, the more I think that this is something that we cannot sidestep. I'll also point out, though, again, as I've been, I've been a big proponent of a comprehensive redistricting. I myself was redistricted in 1981 in this town. I got moved out of Osborne Hill, put on a bus, I had previously been on Walker, put on a bus to go to Jennings, and that was an interesting experience. I was also the first graduating class of the consolidated high schools. I was a Ward guy. I met my wife, who went to Ludlow, so that worked out okay for me. But having been through that experience as a child and remembering very vividly how that made me feel, that's going to be an experience that I'm going to carry into this process, and that I'm not going to forget. As we are looking at maps and spreadsheets and trying to say, "Should we slice off one street and move it here?" That's, that's not what I have in mind. That's not ever been my view of the process, but I think it needs to be done, and it needs to be done soon.
Ms. Canelli.
I'm not going to, I think, Mr. Peterson, I'm not going to repeat any of his points, which I think were all well-made, but I do want to point out one thing from your set, and we, again, commented on this at the Board. We, in fact, actually have not officially changed a single guiding principle. That, that entire conversation about the guiding principles and scrapping this or doing that, that was entirely discussion. To actually change them is going to require the vote, the voting of the Board, so that we put that forward. So all of those discussions, those are still, to me, anyway, live topics that, as people have opinions on, "Yes, we agree with what you did," or "No, we don't agree with that." We're still very much taking that input, that we now have two documents, but actually only one of them is official, which was one that had been voted on several years, you know, a few years ago. That new draft is a reflection of conversation, but in fact is nothing official yet. So that was just one point I wanted to clarify.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Pitko.
Mrs. Maxicanelli actually beat me to what I was going to say, but I'll just add that because we have not voted on those guiding principles, please feel free to send an email with the things you were saying to anyone, but that confidently, we will all vote on those guiding principles, and I think that would be important for us moving forward to have confidence in those guiding principles before we give it to any consultant.
I would agree, I would think you'd all agree that you don't have an, even if those were agreed upon, there's far from enough information to go to Malone and McBroom, yeah, right, to do any kind of redistricting, any kind of plan. Ms. Vitale.
Those guiding principles came out of a committee that was looking specifically at elementary school space, so we're starting there, and I think the Board is still has a lot of conversations to have and a lot of work to do before we're ready to send any principles to Malone and McBroom. That's going to be happening over the next two meetings in May. Haven't even looked at the middle school principles as a Board yet. So the ones that you mentioned, if we decide to go in a comprehensive redistricting, we will look at those, revisit those, and see what needs to be included in the material that we send to the consultants.
Mr. Asay.
I think it's important to note that one of the things we discussed at, at previous meetings is, or at the meeting when we initially discussed these guiding principles and talking about them, and as Mrs. Maxicanelli said, simply talking about them, was that many members of the Board expressed that they felt that it could have potentially handcuffed the consultant with providing scenarios that were provided in the past, prior to me being on the Board. And I agree with that sentiment in that I think when, if someone were to look at, how in the world could they remove least disruption? Well, when you look at it and you dive in deep, and if you watch a recording of the meeting, you'll see that what we discussed and some of the points that certain people made were that it's not that we want to cause disruption, but what we want to do is try to give the consultants, when we give them the charge, full of all of the information you're talking about, which we have not gotten to yet, that they have a little bit potentially more leeway to come up with multiple scenarios for us to look at. And as in the past, the Board would be provided with scenarios, but my hope is that moving forward, one day when we get to those scenarios, that we don't blindly dismiss them because they go against what has been in the past. And I'm not saying that means I'm advocating for one thing or the other. All I'm saying is, we are nine elected members, and we have a due diligence to do and look at scenarios thoroughly, vet them, compare them, and go through that process. So I don't know if that answers any of your question, but moving forward, yes, I've said it at multiple meetings prior, I don't think we should engage Malone and McBroom and pay money to them until we have a more concise idea of what we're looking for. And yes, that will include public comment, as it always does, and I don't think anyone here is, is against that, and I, I personally welcome the public comment. I like the emails. I like the conversations. I like the town halls and the comments, because it all helps, especially for those of us that are newer. You know, I'm new to the school system. My son's in his first year there. Some of my fellow Board members have high schoolers or kids that have graduated, so I think we have a good representation here. But again, yes, I don't think we're sending anything hastily.
Mrs. Jacobson.
Oh, I keep looking at Kristi. Sorry. Without reiterating the same point, so that we're not at a place to answer most of your questions at this point, I will say that my lens is that this fall, past fall, the Board did approve and adopt a Board goal, which you know very well of, consists of multiple facilities challenges that we're looking to address. One small piece of that, or one-fourth of that, was looking at redistricting to serve a specific purpose. So my vision is that that's the goal. Those are the goals, and just being focused on addressing the issues that were in that goal. Second is that the principles that we have is an existing document, so that has to happen at the table because we're a committee at the whole, as a whole at this point. The amendment process to that will happen here, even though there's a draft out there that some people had put personal, you know, their opinions on in terms of possibly changing, that wasn't a consensus of the body on those changes at this point. So that's out there for that. And then, just personally speaking on that existing document, that'll be a conversation that we have, but I also agree, not wanting to tie the consultant's hands to an extreme extent necessarily, there are values in the existing principles, values of our community in that document as well. So I'm a little cautious of scudding it from long-held community values as well, since trying to strike a balance on that.
So what is the timing of the process? What's the, what is envisioned as the timing of this process? Ms. Vitale.
Our Board goal has it by reaching a decision by June, the end of the school year, at least to have the guiding principles, an idea of principals, a charge from Malone and McBroom.
And parameters? Parameters to give to?
Parameters, and decide where we're going to be, or not. I mean, part of the goal is we might have, we may go to the table and have a discussion and not be at that point. I think we need, still need to get some input from the community and decide how comprehensive we want to go. In terms of the least disruption, that was removed because redistricting in and of itself is disruptive. So it's just, and you could close a school that only has 300 children, and it's not disruptive to the other 9,000 students, but it's very disruptive to those families. So I think that it just, there's a lot of ways to read that. We didn't feel that it really added value, which is why I think it was suggested just to come off. It might come back on when we do vote on it.
But does comprehensive mean all three levels of school? Is that what comprehensive? Hold on, hold on. I'd like to go to Mr. Dwyer, and then I'd like to move on to another subject. Mr. Dwyer.
So one of the problems with your questions are that the nine of us have not voted on anything. So all we're doing is offering our own individual viewpoints, not a Board conclusion yet, because as was stated, even the guiding principles have been only a discussion point. For me, a good planning principle always in elementary schools is to design for 90% occupancy. We have had some schools as low as 71%, and other schools as high as 110%. One of my goals in redistricting will to be looking at, get more of the schools close to equal at the 90% level. And because the, we have added square feet to about four different elementary schools in the last decade, and parents have a way of buying a house wherever they want, and that changes the population within different neighborhoods, and so I think it is time to take a look at it. The second thing I would. The second thing I would say is that in the last decade, there's one phrase in government that we've heard every year, everything is on the table. Because we don't have that stability of planning that used to exist 20, 30 years ago. And so I think the idea of being a little bit more flexible to the consultant so that they can look at what we want to accomplish is required by that. I do hope that the board will look at the feeder pattern, not just as an elementary school issue, but a feeder pattern that fits into middle school and high school. That's one of my personal goals, but who knows?
Thank you, Mr. Saye, again. Can I get another speaker, please? Name and address, and please sign in.
I'm Gina Halleck. I'm a parent, 6 Somerville Street, Fairfield. I'm also the psychologist at the Early Childhood Center. I have no compelling point to make, I have no prepared statement, I have no heartfelt plea to put before you tonight. I really came in person to say thank you to the board. I know that the current situation is untenable, and like probably every staff member in this district, to me, my kids in that building are the most important kids in the district. My families are the most vulnerable, and they deserve the utmost care. And I feel that you have been responsible, responsive, respectable, respectful, excuse me. I have confidence in the integrity of this board, and I know that you will be doing right by our children as we move forward. So on behalf, I can only speak for myself, I want to say on behalf of the ECC staff, but on behalf of myself, I just wanted to come out and say thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker? Name and address, and please sign in.
Larry Kaylee. I live on 1162 Jennings Road, and I would like to talk about the solar carports proposed for the schools. There are several points I'd like to make about these structures. For one, I want to briefly read an excerpt from an article in the Hartford Current Magazine Newspaper, April 24, 2019, and it states, "Connecticut's air pollution is the worst in the eastern U.S. according to a new report." Fairfield County has the highest level of ozone pollution in the New York City metropolitan area. And asthma rates are, and this is not from that particular article, but asthma rates are among the highest in the northeast. Fairfield County does very well with that. So, that, to me, is a guiding principle, and in fact, I was instrumental in writing the proposal when I was on the RTM way back when, I forget if you were on it at that time, the 20% by 2010 proposal. And the Clean Energy Task Force was formed, and it's recently had its name changed to the Sustainable Fairfield Task Force. Now, to get back onto track, you know, where we're coming from, when we look at the air quality, carbon dioxide in Fairfield, we're dealing with rising sea levels, as we all know, extreme weather, climate change, which contributes to an increase in disease-bearing vectors such as West Nile, Zika virus, malaria, et cetera. Diseases that you normally wouldn't find here.
Mr. Kaylee, I just asked that you try and wrap this into the carports as quickly as you could. Thank you.
Okay. The, all of these are a reason, and there are others too, to have the carports. The carports are part of the solution. The big picture is completed by lots of little segments. So, the carports will make a difference, it will provide students with educational And, by the way, it would also save the taxpayers a lot of money. Thus far, Fairfield has saved $6 million in electricity cost. So, this would add to the savings and help clean our air. So let's reduce our carbon footprint, reduce the burden on taxpayers, and take actions that contribute to a healthier Fairfield. That's why carports will come in very handy and make a difference.
Thank you, Mr. Kaylee. Next speaker?
Hi.
Name and address, please sign in.
Hi, my name is Matt O'Gurk, and I live in 287 South Benson Road. And I just wanted to talk a little bit about the guiding principles. We had seen a draft, the draft of the principles that are, of course, not consensus. So I just wanted to take an opportunity to just express our family's, you know, thoughts on a particular principle that isn't in the current draft, that being that walkers should remain walkers. I find that to be one of the more important principles. I know many people, including our family specifically, moved to our neighborhood to be walkers and to live that lifestyle. We live in a part of town that has the infrastructure and sidewalks that support that, you know, type of lifestyle. It's a healthy lifestyle, it's forward-thinking, it's green. I appreciate Mr. Peterson's perspective. I didn't know that. It's good to know that there's at least a person on the board that, you know, has a direct understanding of what that may feel like. That's something that's really concerning to our family, and I know it concerns others. Not only do I believe that walkers should remain walkers, should be a principle that should be put back on that, that guiding principle draft, but it all should be prioritized. I know the 15 principles didn't have a priority, at least I don't think they did. They seem to be on the slate, and that they're all given equal priority. One suggestion I would make is to perhaps consider prioritization of principles with walkers being walkers as one of the top principles. The idea of busing a child that's a walker, you know, not only is it that you're being removed out of your neighborhood, the one that you've chosen, but it obviously has cost implications. In our particular situation with scenario C out there, which is funny that it appeared because it seems to run afoul of all the 2015 principles, our fear is that that will come back, and that it'll be considered. And obviously, what we'd like to be able to do is get ahead of that and have it never be considered again. It's causing anxiety in the neighborhood, but I think that's rightfully so. I mean, we want to be able to get ahead of these things as quickly as possible. Walkers should remain walkers town-wide. I can't speak to everybody, but it seems like that would be a resource-saving measure, no matter where you are in town. That's really all I have. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you all. I don't have any particular questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
One additional thi, sorry, one additional thing I forgot to mention was, on my way out to this meeting, I found this on my kitchen table. My daughter received this certificate from Sherman. It's Walking Wednesday's Certificate of Excellence, presented to my daughter for walking to school every Wednesday. So if there's any doubt that there are kids that actually walk to school, this is proof. Thank you.
All right. Let's keep it down, please. Ms. Vitale.
I'm very happy to see that certificate. I think that at the time of the walking being removed from our discussions, I think it was in the context of hearing that there were a lot of walkers that weren't walking, that were being driven to school, which, talking about air pollution, creates traffic, pollution in town, and I think in a moment, the board was saying, well, if walkers really aren't walkers, if walkers are really car passengers, then maybe it might be better, or not necessarily, better for some families, actually, to be on a bus, or better for traffic for them to be on the bus. But I think that that will be one principle, I can't speak for everybody, that I think many will agree with, that walkers should, if you are not getting a bus, my own personal, my own personal opinion will be that walkers for elementary school should be walkers.
Ms. Cannelli.
Well, I own that conversation, because I'm the one that started it, so I might as well address that with the public. It absolutely, that conversation started exactly as Ms. Vitale said, which is that we were hearing that we were needing to make changes to the ed specs and pulling money away from something else because of the importance to the Sherman community of the kiss-and-go line, and that there were so many cars pulling up to that school, needing adjustments to the traffic pattern and guidance from police on what would and wouldn't be expected, needed for the community. And so I did mention it very much exactly as Ms. Vitale said, well, if they're all going to drive, then why is it that we are privileging this as one of our principles at that point? So just, that's exactly where it did come from. I throw that out there, that I do hope that as this weather eventually, finally, hopefully soon stops raining and warms up a bit, that that is something that's embraced by the community. But I will also back up, say, just as to what will be, I think, a part of our conversation. I know that when I also brought up the issue of walkers, I was not viewing those guiding principles as elementary school guiding principles. I was viewing them as period. And we already have students right now who could be walkers to two different schools. So, if you could be moving someone who is a walker, and so this is not, these aren't just applying to the Sherman community, and I know they are the ones that have been most in tune with this discussion, which I think is great. I completely agree with Mr. Peterson, that the feedback is extremely helpful for us to make a decision that really reflects the concerns and values of the whole community. But you do have children who are walkers, who could be a walker to more than one school. Also, when you talk about walkers, we're not just talking about elementary school, but what about the middle school and the high school? That someone who might be a walker here would not be elsewhere. It's just, again, that was the context in which it came up. It definitely is not one that I think is written in stone. The board was, I think, a little bit taken aback when we actually got a draft of new guiding principles, when we hadn't voted on them. I respected that staff had tried to come up with a summary of our conversation, but it has now taken on a life that that is now actually something official, which we've now said multiple times by several of us here, is not the case, and that it's still very much a live document. But I did just want to explain, you know, where that conversation comes from, and that it's not as straightforward as, I can see my school, why would you bus me across town? That a lot of our neighborhoods, it's not so clearly defined in terms of why that would be a factor. That is not an argument to bus walkers. I'm simply saying that there's more nuance to it than just what might be out there. Which we need to clarify, I think, better.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker? Name and address, and please sign in.
Rabab Hassan Sayed, and I'm at 579 Judd Street. I'm just, I'm not here for any questions, or even a discussion or anything, I just wanted to, as a parent, make an appeal to, actually. I have kids in the Fairfield School System. My youngest is, went through the ECC, and I really just wanted to speak in support of, first of all, to thank you all, that was not an easy thing to inherit at all. You know, it should have been, they should have been seeing that coming down the line, but you guys are really in it, and we have a wonderful sped director who's kind of trying to, you know, assess all angles and try to figure out the situation. But just in support of it, it was invaluable to our family. Jerianne Mitchell was my son's SLP. Gina was our school psychologist. I can attest to the fact that we are that vulnerable family, and we were greatly impacted. It's not easy to go through, we have the challenges, but that school, that preschool, that staff, really, really, for the three years that my son was there, flourished, and, you know, they're a family to us. And to see it divided, separated, or to be going through what it's kind of going through, and for other families going in, or currently who are part of the ECC, probably having to have a number of sleepless nights, wondering what was, what is going to become of services for their child that are essential. You know, it's, I really hope that the board is able to come to a great short-term and a fantastic long-term decision as well. But it just, I just wanted to say that it means the world to us. The ECC does, anything you need, require, input, what have you, we're happy to do. And I'm a former family, I can't even speak to the current families who are currently there. The second topic I just wanted to address was, I know we have, we've had 700,000 cut from facilities, et cetera, things of that nature, from the Board of Selectmen, from your wonderful budget that you had. I want to speak in support of the solar carports at the three schools, Roger Ludlow Middle School, Stratfield, and Burr. So, there's an opportunity there to not only educate and really make our town more efficient, but there's also an opportunity for savings. I almost wonder if those savings could be put to something like a new facility, or repair the current facilities. You know, my son is now at the CLC at Osborne Hill, there's no air conditioning there, you know? I mean, I know you guys are all really, really tight on our, on the budget end of it. We fight, I speak every year at the Board of Finance to try to make sure that, you know, everything goes through. I don't know if that's a way to, I do, I do actually know, that is a way to save money, that is a way to sort of generate savings, to be able to apply to things when, at this juncture, it seems like with the budget cuts, et cetera, there is no money that's going to, there isn't, there isn't much money that's going to be coming in. So we do have to be more innovative in thinking about how we're going to do this, and I really am 100% in support of the solar carports, or the solars on the roof, or, you know, anything that we can give. And the Sustainable Fairfield Task Force has been, I'm just a volunteer there, but they've been phenomenal in trying to, you know, really gain community input, neighbors, you know, the town, the PTAs. We've engaged everyone on every front and tried to really come up with the best proposal. We've gone back and forth, but we're really trying to come up with the best proposal for everyone to be happy with. So, just wanted to, in support of that, to, you know, say that. But thank you for all that you do.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Mr. Peterson.
Hi, thanks so much for coming in tonight. I guess to address your second, your second point first, I know I'm a big fan of the solar power that's been put on in various facilities, and I, seeing the carports that were put in at Ward and Ludlow, I think that those were appropriate to the space, and I'm glad that they're finally operating as expected. My hesitation about the Burr and Stratfield locations is largely about space. The Stratfield parking lot, I know well, my kids went there. It's a small space, and it'll be a large structure that would be in that space. And that's kind of where I'm, where I'm at. I know that when we had the presentation at our last meeting, they had shifted the plans for Ludlow as, you know, from being directly on Uncle Road and screened by Arbivide to a rooftop, which raises its own questions, but we're trying to, at least I am, I'm open to hearing options to kind of satisfy both issues, but I, you know, I do find the savings compelling, and if we can do it in a way that is not overly disruptive, then I'm in favor. But I think your, your first point, the one thing that I want to say is that I can't actually speak for everyone on the board, but I'm confident when I say, the ECC is a treasure, and we all, we all think of it that way.
It's a national model, everyone should be doing what the ECC has done.
It's fantastic.
Truly, we're very lucky to have it.
You know, the feedback that we've gotten from staff has been, has been remarkable. I'm so grateful that we have that relationship with them. The one challenge that I think that we have, and you've, you touched on, and we have facilities issues all over the district, I think the one challenge that I've had talking to the public about this is educating them about what the ECC is. Outside of people who have been touched by that program, it's not well-known. It's not well-known that this is an obligation that we have, and it's a, you know, it's a duty for us as a town. So, please continue to speak up, and, you know, and we-
Everyone here, spread the word.
But thank you.
Great turnout, by the way.
Thank you. Name and address, please sign in.
Hi, my name is Jim Curley, I'm at 185 Springer. And as the topic came up about minimizing impact with any redistricting, both kind of question and request is, have you obtained any independent research, or do you plan to commission any of your own studies to assess the social and academic performance impact to students who do get redistrict? I mean, there's the convenience factor of, yeah, nobody- I mean, there's the convenience factor of, yeah, nobody wants to be redistrict for, for all the regular reasons, but have we even yet assessed if there's an academic or, or social impact that should be part of the criteria? That's my only question.
Thank you. Mrs. Kenneli.
First of all, I would, I would want to say that the word convenience is not a word anybody on this board has used. No one is looking to do, I, I just want to, just as a wordsmith or by trade, I, I jump on the word convenience. No one is looking at this as convenient. Believe me, it is probably about the most inconvenient decision among those that we could be embarking on. But what we have, I, I don't believe there's been, the only discussion of a consultant that we've had as a board is regard to specifically the machinations of making the principles, bringing them to fruition. Because certainly, I, and, and on that, I would say that I know that when, one of the, in the mid 2000, early 2000, 2004, 5, I was doing my own reading about redistricting, and I came up with articles, reached out to board members who welcomed getting them from me. So that's not the scientific consultant that you're looking for. But what I would remind you is that we do know of academic educational impact from having unbalanced schools would be something. So that, just to know that there is, it goes both ways. You know, that when you have, when you can only have two sections per grade, there's educational impact from that. When you have students where things are too crowded, when you have art in a cart, when you have those things. So, but I would be, I'm not sure about the money for getting a consultant for what you described, but I would certainly say I would welcome, if you know of some research that is out there, I would certainly be interested in reading it.
Ms. Pitco.
I want to thank you for coming tonight, and thank you for your question. And Mrs. Max and Kenneli, of course, spoke so eloquently. I, this is my fourth year on the board. I could tell you, four years ago, I didn't want to ever have this conversation. Redistricting is a word that literally makes everyone's blood pressure go up. No one likes you having the conversation. And I can say that in four years, I have watched some of the facilities issues happen. I sat here and watched a child come up from Holland Hill and talk about their class, their building is too squishy, because there's just not enough capacity. And so when you look at some of the schools, and they're, and they're having not an equitable distribution, I'm a teacher, I know what that means. And so we don't take any of this lightly. And we have been trying to be as transparent as we can to always keep the students in mind. That is the ultimate goal here, to make sure that all students are equitably getting what they need in space and services.
Understood, but motivation can be something short of, of some, some like empirical research to help, help with that. I'm not saying that anyone isn't. And my suggestion is, since it's kind of an academic operation, that impact on our academic performance should be like, kind of top criteria? Just, or else what are we doing here?
Thank you. Mrs. Jacobson?
So, a couple of points on what you mentioned. I'm keenly interested in what you're discussing, depending on the breadth and scope of this discussion and how far that it goes. I think that some of our original principles that were deeply thought about and collaboratively built with the community contemplated some of that in terms of, you know, just as examples, things like keeping siblings together, and some of the principles that were on the original document contemplated as grandfathering, things like that, you know, had some thought process behind some of these social and emotional components to it and academic. Depending on the scope and breadth of this, I think that it is absolutely going to be, you know, of course, you can always look at empirical evidence, but also bringing in our expert staff, and our guidance team, and our special ed team, and, and having a discussion and frank, serious conversations about the impact on that, and what grades are involved and whatnot. So that'll definitely be something on my mind, for sure.
Thank you. Next speaker. Name and address, and please sign in.
My name is Heather Dubrowski. I live at 75 Millendale Road. And we are proud walkers, as well as most of Holland Hill School is. There's only two buses, as you know, that goes to Holland Hill. And Mr. Peterson, in 1981, I was at Ofield School. And then I wasn't.
Did you know Andrea Yergilevich?
No, I didn't. Sorry. I don't want to age myself too much, but I was at Ofield School, and I remember what it was like to go from Ofield School to Roger Sherman, and seeing my school split in half. Dr. Lubis was my principal at the time, and Mrs. Factor, Quinet Factor, and I spoke at her funeral, because she had such an impact on my life, that I remember, that was like, half of my school went to Sherman, and half of my school went to Dwight, because Mill Hill, again, I'm aging myself, wasn't around at the time. So I want to talk about a few things. The fact of the matter is, is the Fairfield I grew up in is no longer the Fairfield that we live in. My mother went to Roger Sherman School when it was the parking lot where Centros is. I mean, that's how long my, we're fourth-generation Fairfielders, so I can talk a lot about Fairfield and the change and all that fun stuff. What I would like you to keep in mind when you talk about redistricting is Fairfield continues to develop over and over and over again. As you know, growing up in Fairfield, and I'm sure some of you as well, if you go down to the beach area, as beautiful as those homes are, it's not the homes that we grew up with. Those used to be small capes. They're no longer that. They are building homes everywhere. They're also something that I would like to ensure that you guys look at when you do do your projections. And again, redistricting is going to have to happen, probably, and I don't want it to, but I understand that the landscape of Fairfield is changing, and something has to happen. But when you look at your projections, I ask that you look at future projections, and like, the developments that haven't even been developed yet. And another important thing is 830G. Are you looking at that? Because let's talk about what's happening on High Street. Let's talk about what's happening on Black Rock Turnpike. Let's talk about what may happen on Bronson Road. You know, there's so many applications at Town Hall right now that haven't either been heard, or approved, or in appeal. And those are very important things that I hope that you take into consideration for this. The other thing, too, is let's remember, and I say this as a full-time working parent who came from Burr to Holland Hill. So we were bussers, now we're walkers. But also to, Holland Hill is an early start school versus the other. And as a working parent, that was such a huge shift for us, because all of a sudden, I had to change my entire work schedule to accommodate that. And my daughter was locked out of after-school at Holland Hill, because there was not enough space for her, because it's limited space, which I'm sure you know. And you, as you so eloquently said, it's squishy. And with this new construction, which is absolutely gorgeous, I walked it, I said to Molly Farrell, I said, I can't believe you're going to allow children in here. It's so pretty. It's like when you buy a new car, you don't, you know, they're just, someone's going to spill goldfish somewhere. But we only gained two classrooms. I mean, that's all we gained at Holland Hill. Let's be very clear here. It's not like we had a new wing. We only gained two classrooms in that building. And I know that Holland Hill's in consideration for the ECC. I love the ECC. I know, my daughter did not go through the ECC, but I'm intimately familiar with it. And my daughter's also someone who received services at Holland Hill. And having to have moved her once already, I know what that's like to start from the beginning, and have to get a team to know her, and to know any child, to kind of get what you've already had and get back. Again, let's talk about the realities of what's happening in our town. So I just ask, when you do look at those projections, and remember what happened to Ofield, all I heard for years, and is, I can't believe they closed Ofield, because you know what, we really could use it right now. Grassmere, we could use too. Let's, let's face it. And, you know, Fairfield High, let's, you know, again, I'm going back to, yeah. But these are just things that, obviously, I know you've already considered. But just remember that when you're looking at these communities, it's so hard. Again, like, the folks at the other schools, they're used to an 8:45 start. Holland Hill starts at 8:10. We get out at 2:45. You should see my scramble. I mean, I've had to call other mothers, saying, oh, my God, I'm stuck on the highway. Can you just watch her for 20 minutes for me, or whatever? Because, again, I was locked out of after-school care. Like, these are really big considerations. And when we were at Burr, it was so easy. And I understand the demographics are very different economically, but it was so easy, because they have space there. You know, I would just go, okay, you're going to after-school today. And do, I would just send an email saying she's going to after-school today. It was just very, very different. So I hope when you look at this as a whole, that you take into the fact that there are still so many developments that haven't been built yet, but there are applications. And when we talk about things like 830G, which, by the way, I just learned about come January, and now I've gotten such a huge lesson, I feel like an expert. And that's not something that, you know, there's a lot of things we can talk about with that. But these aren't just like one family. These are multiple families that are coming in, and it's not only senior-based. So let's be very clear on that. I'm not saying that all the kids are going to elementary school, but it's going to, you know, impact our elementary school, our middle school, and our high schools. So again, when you're looking at those projected numbers, and when you hire your consultants, you need to make sure they're looking at those as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jacobson?
Thank you for your comment. And since I've been on the board, I've been kind of hammering the planning and zoning horn here at the Board of Ed in terms of its influence and impact upon our community, and our schools specifically. Even us to go so far as to go down there and ask how many permits have been pulled per school zone. It's just not something that they, you know, think about, or plan about. Adding in transit order and development, factoring in all of the things that you said. Fairfield has issued the most permits in the last couple of years than it has since the early 90s. So it is an A-building boom, a development boom. It doesn't necessarily mean that everything will be coming with children, because they've definitely studied that piece of it. It's a small proportion in terms of the type that they're looking at building, but it absolutely is something that our consultant will need to factor. And they do, just by the way, in terms of their projections already. Look at home sales and kind of what's out there, but probably not as in-depth as we might need them to go this time forward. So it's definitely on my mind, and I know I've, you know, I'm more on the board.
And I specifically have an 830G component to that, because if, and that is such, something that's so huge. I mean, they're looking at putting 40 units on High Street, a quarter of a mile from Holland Hill. Am I saying that they're all going to be filled with elementary school kids? No. But I'm saying, you know what, that's going to have an impact on, on Holland Hill. And it's going to have an impact on Woods, and it's going to have an impact on Ludlow, which is our current school base.
Thank you. Ms. Pitco.
Couple of years ago, when McAlona McBroom brought the six possible scenarios to us, one of the reasons I rejected it was because they had not looked into the 830G. Here we are a couple of years later, and already we've seen how many of those have been built. So absolutely, I think this board is very well aware that those have to be considered into where people are moving into town, and where possibly those 830Gs can go in.
And I will tell you that no one ever considered the property. If you're familiar with 980 High Street, no one ever considered the fact that 40 apartments could possibly, and these are one, two, and three-bedroom apartments, could fit into that small, two-acre space. So that's something that no one would, I would, in a million years, would have never known. I didn't even know that space existed, and I walk past it every single day.
Thank you. Let's move on to the next speaker. Name and address, and please sign in.
Sean McCormick, 193 South Benson. First, thank you very much for the clarity on the draft of the guiding principles. That's what brought me here today. And to mimic some of the comments before, I have two children, one more coming on Thursday. None of them, so my wife's waiting for me to get home, but none of them are in school yet. But we picked this area specifically because we wanted the neighborhood feel of being able to walk not only to school, but to town, to the beach, to, to the area. We feel like that builds a great sense of community. And also, on a very personal note, is my son has hearing loss, and will also lose his vision. So part of that ability to teach him at a young age to use the infrastructure that was talked about, the sidewalks, the safety of walking, and being able to be a part of his community safely, that's very important to us. And, you know, I just wanted that to be considered when, you know, the guiding principles are brought up for a vote.
Thank you. All right, next speaker. Name and address, and please sign in.
Teresa Miguel Sterns, 79 Oyster Road. And the reason I came, most of the reasons I came have already been articulated, but something came up this, just during these comments that I'd like to address. And I believe, Ms. Kenneli, when you were talking about parents driving so many children to Sherman, well, maybe we should bus them. I think the reaction should be, though, well, maybe we should find out why. And I think safety is a big reason why. I think we can all agree that cars drive entirely too fast on Judson Road. There's no crosswalk between Judson and Sherman School as well, which I've never really understood why. There's no crosswalk there. Up and down Beach Road, cars go very fast. It's not a really safe area, in my opinion, for children to be walking. I walk from Oyster Road to the train station every day, twice a day. And it is not, it is not very safe all the time when I'm crossing Old Post Road. I've had several incidents where I've almost been hit in the crosswalk. And in addition to wanting children to be able to walk to schools, biking around the community is also, should also be a viable option for children to get to school. There are no bike lanes in the beach area in Fairfield. I've lived in over a dozen cities and towns across the country and in Europe, and this is, quite honestly, one of the worst communities I've lived in for walking and biking. So I think in addition to looking at redistricting, and whether or not walkers should be walkers, I think we need to look at biking, cycling as well, and, and really improve the infrastructure in this town, so that it's safe for our children to bike and to walk to our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Kenneli?
One thing I can't encourage you strongly enough to do is to be in touch with your RTM representatives, that you have the four of them. I think they are, all four of them are quite active advocates for the exact issues that you say, and to be on top of that. Because I know, I've read plenty, seen plenty on Facebook, heard personal anecdotes regarding that. I don't think there's a neighborhood in town that doesn't feel the same way. You know, I'm sorry, a stop sign, I thought only meant one thing, not press the gas. But apparently, it has multiple meanings. But I completely agree. Unfortunately, obviously, what you're talking about is outside of our purview. I do want to just reiterate the point that when I had brought that up, saying, if they're going to do that, it was very specifically in the confines of a discussion of something that was going to cost the Sherman School District, that part of our Phase III construction, we were talking about letting something go as part of that Phase III, in order to address all of the people who are driving their children to school. And thus, that was the, the context for that comment coming up, because I didn't want to give up that other aspect. And that's still something that we're going to be talking about at the board, those ed specs. But again, just getting back to your point, I couldn't agree more. I think it's a town-wide complaint, but I definitely encourage you to be in touch with your RTM representatives.
Well, in addition to, to safety issues, there could be other reasons why parents feel they need to drive their kids to school, like the start times, the end times, commutes to work. So I think we need to just really explore why so many people are driving when they could be walking.
And, and that's what I just want to say, is that I didn't want to be insensitive in saying that. I completely recognize that we all have different circumstances, and I'm not asking any parent to explain. That's, it's a parent's decision. If they, if they feel that for whatever the circumstance it is, that they feel that while they might be a walker, that they needed to drive, it's not for me to dictate one course of action or another. As I said, it was the context of, and I can't remember what it is that we were talking about giving up. It was something with the gym, the stage.
The stage.
We were talking about Sherman giving up the stage in order to address the tremendous number of people who were driving their children to school. So it was in that context that I was bringing that up as an option. So-
I guess I would suggest that we actually do ask the parents why they're driving to school. Survey the parents. Find out what would, find out why they're driving when they could be walking or cycling, and find out what it would take to get them to walk. So I would encourage-
Fair point. And I do think they're doing that at the school level right now, at Sherman, after this conversation happened at the board level, and at the building committee level, and just in terms of recreating school culture a little bit on that. And it was really just a discussion point. But thank you. And as Mrs. Max Kenneli said, with those other issues for the town, contact your RTM members, and you're lucky that you have a selectman here also that can-
Mr. Dwyer?
The comment was made in relationship to the discussion we were having at Sherman School. But it has happened before in all of our elementary schools, because over the last 10 or 20 years, there's been an increased number of parents who choose to drive their children to school. And therefore, we are spending, and other districts are spending, a lot of site development costs with driveways and pull-offs and whatnot to accommodate those increased cars. So it is not just a Sherman School issue. It is in all of our schools, including middle school and, and high school. I would make one comment in relationship to the number of parents who have come up from Sherman. When you sit on this side of the table, one of the struggles we have is, and I'll use walkers as an example, if, I don't know what the number is, but let's say 10% of our students walk. Have we accomplished our goal in redistricting? our goal in redistricting, if we still have 10% of our students who walk, we just have a different group of students who may be walking now, but in terms of encouraging walking and not spending more money on busing, do we look at the global impact on all 10,000 students or the individual impact? As Ms. Vitale was commenting, if it works for 9,900 students but not for 100 students, it's a 100% impact on those 100 students. Or with the prior speaker who said, but my child will be impacted. And that's the struggle this board always has, making decisions. Does it impact an individual child, a group of children, or is it fair to all concerned in the whole district? They're not easy decisions to make.
No, and I don't envy your position. If parents all over the town are driving to all the different elementary schools, I, again, I would just reiterate, maybe we need to ask why. Maybe we need to do some more information gathering before we jump into redistricting. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Name and address, and please sign in.
Hi, I'm Jackie Bardenwerper, 35 South Benson Commons. Also hear about the guiding principles. Thank you so much for taking your time to discuss that they are still in draft form. And also, I apologize that I am reiterating some of the same points. We are currently walkers, and we really want to remain walkers and feel strongly that that principle should be retained. In addition, I wanted to bring up the principle regarding that established neighborhoods should remain established, that you should look at boundaries such as, like, I think it was like rivers or lakes and highways. I believe that was also taken out of the current draft that has been circulating. And I know specifically with the Sherman area in the beach community, we are a very insulated neighborhood. We don't have other school systems or districts that are butting up against our neighborhood. It's the Post Road, the Ash Creek, and then Sherman. So to move us out of that community and to put our children on a bus when we specifically chose a neighborhood for walking, you know, doesn't seem to make a lot of economic sense, environmental sense with the additional busing, and to take out that neighborhood piece, I really think would lose a lot of the sense of community that Fairfield has. I didn't grow up in Fairfield, but my mom did. She was a proud walker to Grassmere until back in the 60s, I guess, to date her. And she, you know, still talks fondly about that and actually says that Grassmere is a lovely school, and she's still upset it's not around. And, you know, being able to give my daughter the opportunity to walk to Sherman has been wonderful. She's a kindergartner. We're just starting out in this process. I have two more that are hopefully going to attend Sherman in the coming years. And I find, as a kindergartner, she's full of energy and running around, doesn't tell me much about her day. But when we are walking to school, that time is sacred. We talk about, you know, the dandelions and the flowers and the trees, and she really opens up and tells me what she did in school. And it's just really special time. It's a healthy, active lifestyle. We stay and play on that playground after school sometimes for one, two hours after school has ended. I was actually one of the parents in opposition to the Stop Kiss and Go change that was going to eliminate the blacktop where the children play after school. I had an infant, have an infant. She was born in October. We walked almost all winter. Really, when the temperature dipped below 35, I was like, eh, maybe I shouldn't take the three-month-old out in this. But besides that, I mean, rain, snow, we walked. And, you know, it's just something that's very important to us. We're so excited to be part of this community, and we just ask that you look at those two principles and look into retaining them when you move forward with the consultants. So thank you so much for your time. Really appreciate it. And I know that you guys have a very difficult decision ahead. So thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Name and address, please sign in.
Hi, good evening. My name is Megan Dockum. I live at 633 Riverside Drive. Again, another Sherman family. We are walkers. I'm not going to take up a huge amount of your time. I came here about a year ago and basically said the same sort of thing that I'm going to say right now. I completely understand, well, slightly, because I don't actually have any idea what you all do here on a regular basis, but I can imagine that your job is very difficult, and you are trying to take into account a lot of different factors, families, areas, whatnot. But I just want to tell you again how important it is for us when we move to the neighborhood to be walkers. We would like to continue to be walkers. It would really be quite heartbreaking to bus our children on a 30-minute bus when it takes us 10 minutes to walk to school. The two points that Jackie just made, I would also like to reiterate the boundaries, you know, look at 95, the Post Road, take those into account. Keep a neighborhood a neighborhood. And please allow our children to attend their neighborhood elementary school. And also, that elementary school feeds into a middle school and high school. And I want to keep, try to keep that intact as well for our older children. And that's it.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you so much.
Name and address, and don't forget to sign in.
Hi, thank you so much for doing what you're doing. My name is Melanie Ross, and I live at 796 Riverside Drive. I'm the parent of two children that go to Sherman. We moved, when we moved here from the city four years ago, we specifically looked at, we were walkers in the city through all four seasons, and we wanted to be walkers here when we moved to Sherman. We could have moved to another area, but my husband also takes the train to work. And we were moving from no car to getting a car. So, and we only wanted one car. We're very, our lifestyle is very much in terms of our footprint on the earth, and that's what we treat our kids. We have solar panels on our cars. And so being able to walk to school is a tremendous, tremendous benefit to our family. Our kids love it. And, you know, we're one for teaching our kids independence. So our kids actually walk to school on their own. Okay? I don't walk with them anymore. They're in third grade and fifth grade. And where we live has great infrastructure for walking to school. They walk with their umbrellas, their snow boots, and there's actually a big crowd of kids and families that walk together. So this knowledge of people not walking, where we are on Riverside and wherever, there are a lot of families that walk, and we could take the cars, but actually, we don't, we don't do that. So my car is not filled with gas for three weeks. Okay? My husband takes the bike. And where we live is really, really precious to us, and we have a great neighborhood, and the community is really special. And so in terms of when you're looking at the guidelines, people really do look at being walkers, walking to middle school, walking to high school. There are a whole bunch of middle schoolers that actually walk. They can't be bothered to take the bus because the bus takes them an hour to get off the bus from middle school. So they're like, you know what? We're going to walk the two miles. And that's what they do. They have kids that walk a mile and a half, and then kids that walk two miles. So I know you may not see that, but I just want you to know that we know that, and we fully take on walking. So that's a huge value, and it adds huge value to our property. And the people that move here, even though we're living in smaller spaces, more talks, which you're hearing again, I want you to know that there are about 40 kids that walk to school from my area up there. And there's a ton more that, my son rides to school as well. Okay? So please, when you're looking at those guidelines, please know that it's really important, and please to make sure that, you know, you don't put walkers on a bus. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Tina Brown, not the parent of an elementary school child. 340 Merwin's Lane, Fairfield, Connecticut. Most of you already know me. I'm a teacher at Fairfield-Ludlow High School. I'm specifically a math teacher, and I'm here because of the freshman math class only offered is Algebra I. And I've been here before. I've said the same thing before. I do know that the Ward teachers, I don't know if they've been here tonight, but I know they have spoken to the superintendent, because even though you guys tell me, go talk to the administration, the administration says, go talk to the board, because it's a budget line item issue. We need something for our students other than Algebra I. When they get to Algebra II, if they didn't do well in Algebra I, they fail Algebra II. So the whole, I've heard lots of, you can't change it because then they won't be able to take the SATs their junior year because they need the Algebra II their junior year. Well, if they're failing Algebra II, it's not helping them on the SATs. Whether it's an all-year, meaning it means every single day instead of every other day, whether it's a two-year, whether it's a pre-algebra, but the disservice done to these children is completely unfair to them. It is not their fault that the only place they can go is Algebra I. It is not their fault that they don't do well, whether it's they came from another district, whether it's they weren't mature enough to pay attention in elementary and middle school, because some kids just aren't there. Maybe they're not cognitively developed enough. Not every kid develops their brain in the same way. You know, we've got kids that take honors geometry in the eighth grade. Every kid can't do that. That's why we only have a few that do it. I am begging that the Board go to the administration and say, we need, in the high schools, something other than Algebra I for freshmen, because it is not fair to these students. They are failing, and it's not their fault. And the only other option is for you to turn around and say, well, just give them passing grades. That's not going to help them anywhere. So, you know, I've been here before, and you know I'll be back.
Thank you. Mrs. Vitale?
I will take that message to the superintendent.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, Wendy Leeann. Thank you for all of your hard work. I'm.
Address, please.
429 Riverside Drive.
Thank you.
I've been a taxpayer for over 20 years. We bought the house because of the walkability. I mean, we bought the house before we had kids, but because of the walkability within the schools, just the whole community. I have a specific question about the grandfathering. Wasn't sure where that stands. I have a fifth grader at Sherman, and I have a sophomore at Ludlow High School, both very high-achieving kids. And again, I don't know what the stance is with the grandfathering situation. But, you know, we talk about shifting the kids in the middle of their experiences. I get very concerned about that. I mean, there's a lot of news and talk about all the mental illness in the world today. And I think switching kids, taking away their friends, you know, in that safe zone, which is that shield from their current stress and anxiety. I think that's got to be considered. But also, I want to make clear that for years, I walked my kids to Sherman, even though technically we're bussers. So, you know, the walkers should be walkers, yes, but I think that it's more than that. It's, communities need to stay together, somebody said. And somebody else said, keep a neighborhood a neighborhood. And so I did, for years, walk with my kids back and forth. And also, my daughter regularly walks from high school to the public library, and then sometimes she'll walk all the way home from there. And my son was looking forward to next year to walk from Ludlow Middle School to the karate that he attends downtown as well. And so these are all these things that we considered when we purchased our home over 20 years ago, because we have this sense of community and this sense of walkability. So I do think that we want to keep, you know, the neighborhoods the neighborhoods, and it's not just the walkers, keep the walkers. And if you have any answers about the grandfathering, that would make me maybe feel better. I don't know.
Thank you. Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, I can speak to the grandfathering issue. That's something that I don't think this board would commit one way or the other at this point, simply because there is no plan before us. Because I think one of the things about grandfathering is that it does cost a lot of money. For instance, the last time when there was the middle school redistricting, when the elementary school feeder shifted in middle school back in 2011, the Board at that time, and I wasn't on the Board, but the Board at that time chose to grandfather both seventh and eighth graders. So for two years, there were two sets of buses going down the same street. And I know somebody earlier spoke to, you know, siblings staying together and grandfathering. Well, they're actually, they work in opposition to one another, because if you grandfather someone, then their younger sibling won't be going to the same school as them. So, and I know that there were some families who were really excited about the grandfathering because they wanted their child to stay with their friends. There were other people who were upset because their children, who were a year apart, weren't going to school together in middle school. And over the course of two years, it cost the district over $1 million in additional busing fees. Because again, you had two buses. You had the My Street, we had the Roger-Ludlow Bus, and then we had the Fairfield-Woods Bus for two years. So that is just something to keep in mind. You know, and I know the last time we did a whole K through 12 redistricting back in 2003, how they did it at the high school level is because they were opening a school. So they had the luxury of opening Ludlow and being able to have just freshmen and sophomores the first year. Then the next year, they had freshmen, sophomores, and juniors. So basically, the students who started at Fairfield High School, which was now, had become Ward, were able to finish out their time there, and only new students were coming into Ludlow. So there wasn't any grandfathering issue at, in the high school level. But middle school and elementary school, there was no grandfathering. If you were going into fifth grade, you were going to a new school. So we've done it two different ways. The past two redistrictings, the middle school redistricting, seventh and eighth, were both grandfathered at the cost of over $1 million over two years. In 2003, the high school, again, they had the luxury of doing it differently because they could gradually phase in the students there. So there wasn't any grandfathering at the high school level, and they chose not to grandfather eighth graders and fifth graders. So.
So again, so I guess, I'm sorry, I have a kind of cold, and I'm trying to process here. So my sophomore at high, in the high school, this is not happening next year when she's a junior, so it'll be happening when she's a senior. She's going to get bumped, potentially?
Well, I'm not saying.
I mean, I'm just trying to understand. I mean, because like, you know.
Well, I think that that is.
I think that discussion is premature, because there's no plan before you.
Well, there is no plan before, so A, we don't know if there is going to be a change. There may not be a change at the high school level. I think different Board members have different ideas about what type of redistricting we want to look at. Some Board members say, I want to do top to bottom. Others are saying, we just want to solve the issues that exist at the elementary level. So first of all, we don't even know how large or small or at all a redistricting plan we will end up with. So we do have the parameters that we're trying to come up with now to give to the consultants, to have them show us some plans. And they're not just going to show us one plan. They will show us a number of plans that will help solve the different issues that we feel exist in our district in terms of space utilization and so on. So I can't say absolutely not anyone who's going to be a senior in a couple of years won't get grandfathered or will get grandfathered, because I have no idea what the plans are at this point, and if, in fact, high school students will be impacted. Personally, if I had someone who had been three years in a high school, I would recommend that they be grandfathered to have their last year in that high school, because I think that would be incredibly difficult, especially considering all of the concerns we have about student mental health in high school. But, you know, there are probably people who can make a really good argument saying, well, you know, they should have eighth grade, too, and they should, they've been in an elementary school for five years. Are you going to actually tell them to leave? So that's a decision that I think we'll need to get input from the public as well, because that does come with a very significant price tag. So I think the more extensive the redistricting is, the more expensive the grandfathering, should we choose to go in that direction, would be.
Dwyer, sorry.
Yeah. So can I just?
Yeah, no, finish.
Thank you. So I, I'm sorry. I know that's not the answer you want, but unfortunately, not knowing the scope of the redistricting and not knowing, you know, the, in terms of both how many schools are impacted and how many levels are impacted, I would hesitate to say definitively one way or the other that we would or that we definitely wouldn't. You know, and again, you know, you do have to factor in the costs, and you have to weigh that against the upheaval and the difficulty that would provide, you know, that you would provide for students who would be starting out at a new school for one year before they graduated from that school. So.
So that's a huge impact.
Yeah.
To consider.
Yes, it is.
Okay. So that's my point. Thank you so much.
Sure.
I'd like to clarify a couple of things that you might not have picked up on. I think Ms. Asa was commenting that we have to decide what we're trying to accomplish before we even hire a consultant, and so that's probably not going to happen until June. So nobody in this audience should think that there's going to be new attendance boundaries by this September. by this September. It's not going to happen. The second thing that you should realize is that there is a lot riding on looking at any redistricting relative to what size the Mill Hill School will be built to. That decision won't be made till June, and there's a debate between 378 seats, 441 seats, or 504 seats. Until we know what that capacity is going to be, we really can't design a redistricting program until we know where that is. Then the second thing is, third thing, so if you approve funding for a school this June, and then it goes to the state, and then it gets put on the cycle, and then the design team actually creates construction documents, so that by the time we get to next spring of 2020, we might be under construction. It takes a year or 18 months to do a project. September of '22, what is, what, the building committee, what target date are they thinking of opening? Yeah. So, September of '22 would be the earliest, in my estimation, that we're going to see any redistricting plan of, we may vote to conceptually do it, but we can't actually implement it until we know the size of Mill Hill, and we have assurances that it will be open at a certain date in September of '22. So, this is not, you know, government doesn't work fast. So, so, if you have a fifth grader or a fourth grader, they're not going to be impacted. They're going to get out of elementary school before. It's going to impact somebody at some point, but the timing that you're thinking about, it's, it's a ways off in terms of it actually being implemented.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Can I?
I'm sorry?
Can I just take a minute? How many speakers for just walking to Mill, to Sherman? Are there? Can I just, does anybody have any sentiment that's different than what has been expressed? If you have something different, and excuse me for taking over, Mr. Moderator, but just in terms of this, in sense of time, and I'm going to defer to my board members, have we gotten the message in terms of walking? Yes? The importance of walking? No, just in terms of-
We've heard it. I'm sorry.
That we've heard the concerns of the Sherman community, that those members of Sherman who are currently walking to Sherman would like to continue to walk to Sherman as we look at any potential redistricting plan. Or would like to continue walking, if we should redistrict, to another, they want to maintain their walking status, to Mrs. Maxine Cunnelli's point in terms of-
Other schools?
-other schools that they might be able to walk to. That is not, this is your time, and I encourage you to come forward and speak to us, but just in the essence of time, I want to share that we, we hear you, we hear those concerns, and we will be taking them with us as we continue to deliberate.
Sir, I didn't mean to, I thought you were finishing, but perhaps the Sherman parents could stay in their seats so that any other parent who is here to talk about other issues, we could at least get those addressed and then have additional Sherman parents come up.
That works. Thank you, Mr. Dwyer. Thank you, Mr. Bateson.
We'll do it that way. Ms. Meska, you have the floor. Name and address, please.
Suzanne Meska, 123 Rygate Road. I've fought the redistricting battle, so I'm going to talk about something different. For the last 12 years, I've watched the Board of Ed, and every June, you have an agenda item, an agenda item that usually reads, "To approve the superintendent's contract." This year, this past June, that item did not appear as an agenda item, a decision that you all made, and an action or inaction that has led to the superintendent's search that we are currently undergoing. My question is, when I went to the search meeting, I had asked at the end of the meeting, as we were asked, what we'd like to see in a superintendent, what the consensus of this body had been in providing to the search firm what you were looking for as the Board of Ed. You will hire your superintendent, and you will oversee your superintendent. And I was surprised to hear that there was no consensus provided by the board to the search firm, but that each of you would be individually interviewed to provide your opinion of what you'd like in the next superintendent. So, I'm here, as I had my say, to say what I would like to see in the superintendent. I think the stakeholders here tonight and at home might appreciate what you all are looking for in the next superintendent.
Mrs. Cunnelli.
I actually have a question to either Ms. Vitale or the moderator, and I'm happy to speak with you one-on-one about that, but in this forum with our agenda item of facilities, finances, and programs, there's no latitude there for personnel. So, I'm not sure that this is the appropriate forum for us to, I mean, literally that we can't because it's not a noticed agenda item, so that I'm not sure that our answering that question as part of this town hall is actually appropriate, but I don't know if the moderator feels differently.
I'll go with that. It doesn't say personnel. So-
All right. Well, thank you very much for your time.
Ms. Meska, please feel free to follow up with the board members individually.
And we will, on May 7th, the leadership profile, HYA is going to be presenting the leadership profile to the board. There will be public comment at that meeting in terms of what they present.
Next speaker.
6:30.
Next speaker, please. Name and address.
Yes, Scott Weisberg, 260 Springfield Road. And I'll sign in in a minute. So, I am very new to Fairfield. We moved here, back here from California last summer, and we chose our area very specifically, as most parents of young children do. You guys probably have them or had them at one point. The school, Burr School, is a very highly rated school in the state of Connecticut, and it's been a wonderful experience for my two girls. A bit concerning to hear that, with the evil word of redistricting, I don't, you know, I sympathize with you guys. It is a terrible, terrible process. I went through it as a young kid. It sucks. But the reality is, so, I'm a data guy, like a lot of people, and I think that there was a consultancy, you guys engaged these consultants, Mill, I forget their name.
Malone.
Thank you. I knew you guys would know. Okay, so they did a consulting report in 2016, and is this kind of the document, the steering document for the Board of Ed, as far as, is that what is kind of, kind of leading your decisions with respect to redistricting or not? That's one question.
Ms. Vitale.
There are maps that were done in the past. Those are not guiding our discussions. I think, as my fellow board member said, right now, we're looking at the ECC, a place for Walter Fitzgerald, facilities utilization of our schools. We're looking at the needs that we have right now. We're trying to gain input from the community. This is one forum. As Mr. Dwyer said, we're going to be giving a charge to Malone and Broom. We're going to be getting plans back next year. There's going to be more input from the community. So, a lot of discussion points about plans that were produced a couple of years ago, we're not looking at those plans right now as viable options. That's not to say when Malone and Broom comes back to us, some version of these plans might be included, but this is not what we're looking for as a reference. It does provide a little bit of a guide for different scenarios of how movement is going to go. You know, we're talking about neighborhood schools. I think everybody wants to try to maintain people as close to their, the school that is in close proximity to their house as possible.
Totally, totally.
Let me just finish. In terms of Sherman, it just gets to be logistical. You're reaching, depending on the year, 100% capacity.
I'm Burr.
You're Burr. Well, I'm just-
You can talk about Sherman clockwise. It seems like there's a lot of Sherman people there. They're pissed off. You better address them, or they may lynch every one of you. Keep going.
No, I'm going to just use, no, I'm going to-
Well, I'm a buster. Paluterian.
Just in terms of how, in terms of the maps.
Yes.
So, you have Sherman. You run out of space at Sherman. Where are you going to put those kids? You want to keep them as close as you possibly can to the neighborhood school, so you're going to go west. That brings you, you know, to Mill Hill. Well, how big is Mill Hill? Is there room for them in Mill Hill? Well, maybe not. So, then, no, well, maybe we'll move people out of Mill Hill up to Dwight. Well, where are you going to put those kids at Dwight? Then they're going to go to Burr. That's how it affects you.
Got it, got it.
So, there's those maps in terms of clockwise, and that's how it gets to be-
You're going right to the heart of my question, Ms. Vitale. I love that. So, what started the process of redistricting? Was it space, as Mr. Dwyer said, or is it racial, what do they call it? Racial imbalance? Was it racial imbalance that led this discussion, or was it the fact that there's a lot of people making a lot of babies in Fairfield, moving in, and we're running out of space? Because the consultancy report that we, that we paid for, we collectively paid for, was very specific, and somebody even paid for an amendment, and it's very well-done, as a data guy that writes a lot of this crap. It's well-done, it's well-thought-out, and it has, and they even made recommendations. I think somebody took, because they made recommendations of multimillion-dollar projects to help redo some of the schools, Hill and-
Holland Hill.
Holland Hill and Mel Hill.
Yes, thank you. So, new guy. So, so, and I think one of those schools actually, somebody, that actually happened, correct? One of those schools did get-
They're in the midst of it.
Yes, so somebody spent millions, not like 80 grand. Somebody spent millions of dollars based off a consultancy report that somebody said, "Hey, we don't have enough data," as Mr. Curly, my neighbor, said. "If we're going to do, make decisions, we're going to make it on data." So, this report talks about racial imbalance. So, again, I'll go back, was it about racial unbalancing in the town, or are we just out of room?
Ms. Cunnelli.
I think it's rather compelling that the racial imbalance as a, something that the board had to start talking about was 15 years ago, and no redistricting has happened. We have tried an awful lot of other measures to do so and are continuing. The last time we voted, it was a step of continuing to try to find other ways to address that as an issue, and I'm not going to say it as a problem, address it as an issue. So, my personal answer would be, it's the space that's what is really now driving this issue. The fact that we do have, as you heard, if you were here at the beginning of the meeting-
I was, yes.
This isn't just about where the new babies are, and, you know, it's also the fact that we have the ECC that is now going to be in two locations as of the last indication of the board that that's what we're looking to do. We also have an alternative high school that we might be needing to find a new location for. We haven't yet confirmed what we want to do about that. Will it impact our current buildings, or will it be someplace independent of our current structures?
Right.
We also have data, which you've undoubtedly seen in that report, that is looking out five, eight, 10 years of schools at 104% capacity, others at 73% capacity. So, speaking personally, we've been grappling with the racial imbalance for quite some time. This discussion, I would argue, is really front and center, being driven by our space utilization.
Okay.
Mr. Asa.
I'd like to piggyback on what Mrs. Maxine Cunnelli said and say, for me, it is a space efficiency issue. We have added over 100,000 square feet to our infrastructure, to our school buildings in the last however many years. I think Mr. Dwyer mentioned a decade, might be less than that. Holland Hill is coming to completion in the next year. Mill Hill is on the books to be potentially expanded, could be argued, but to be renovated and brought up to date. I do want to address one thing that you said, that you mentioned that you believed, I understood you, that I think you believe that Holland Hill might have been done because of this report, if that's the case. We have-
A recommendation. Maybe it might be said, "Okay, that's 10% of our decision," or, "Oh, we really respect these guys." Maybe it's half our, I don't know.
So, we, it's important to note that, as a district, we do have a long-range facilities plan, and we have a waterfall chart, and those, I believe, can be referenced on the website for the district. But we have a long-term plan for facilities going out years and years and years, and Holland Hill did fall in that plan. Now, in that report from 2016, it does reference some of the scenarios hinging on schools being certain sizes, right? And it does talk a lot about racial imbalance. For me, I've been very vocal all along, since I've come on a board, on the board, that I have my own opinions about, about that and solving it or not solving it. But for me, as Mrs. Maxine Cunnelli said, we have, we have buildings that are, that are drastically different as far as utilization. We've added all of this space, and for me, I want to make sure that we at least look at, how are we using it, and what are the, the results of making changes to that, to equalizing, as Mrs. Picko, as Ms. Picko said, you know, we have an inequality where, let's say, one school's at 70-something percent and one school's at over 100%. Our job here as a board is to look out for the almost 10,000 students in the district. So, when you talk about the plan here, you talk about 2016, I think Mrs. Vitale mentioned, we're, we're talking about creating a charge for consultants to come up with a new plan. So, for me personally, I'm not looking at the 2016 plan as my, as my guide here. I, I have said, this board needs to decide, and you bring up a very good question, this board needs to make a decision, why are we looking at this? And when we come to an agreement on that, then maybe racial imbalance may get solved in the process, right? But is that what we're looking at? Why are we doing this? And you bring up a very good point, and that is what we are working on with our board goal and our discussions, and I urge you to stay involved with that to-
I'd love to, I'd love to. I think, I mean, based on the numbers that I see here, I think it's going to be very, very difficult for anyone to solve a racially imbalanced school that's almost 50% minority. Just bottom line. It's just very hard to solve for X. I grew up in Boston. Eventually, I grew up in inner-city Boston. I went to some very tough schools. My dad made a few bucks. We moved out to the burbs like this. And then, you know, our schools had Metco programs, which some of you may know what those are, if you're old enough. You know, these were basically kids that qualified from really tough inner-city schools that, that showed some level of either academic or athletic prowess, would, could come out effectively, let's just call it what it is. They were bussed out from the inner-city black schools to the white schools out in the suburbs. And those kids were brought into an environment where they could potentially thrive and get better access to teachers, better access to tutelage after school, better athletic programs, et cetera. So, that was one solution, and I don't know if that's a solution that works in such a relatively small community. But the other thing that I saw that worked reasonably well was, was using, and you may have looked at this already, and it could be a lot less painful than redistricting, is adding capacity to schools with temporary housing with, and I know, I'm shaking your head, I know, it's challenging.
We know, we've been down that road.
It's a bad road. Let's be clear, it's not a great road, but I would ask you to consider this. Redistricting the movement of young children in and around an environment is, I think, far more costly from a psychological level than it is from a budgetary standpoint, or having to bring in other teachers on a temporary basis while you try to solve for X. X is a big X. If you want to do away with the racial side of things, fine. You're running out of space, fine. You know, it, those are big problems, to your point. Government moves very slowly. And in the middle of all of this, you have to still put your fingers in the dike and solve for the leak. So, if you're having space issues, fix the space. You're not going to build a school in a year. These guys talked about building another school, and they were going to open it in 2020. That was in 2016. I don't think you guys even broke ground on the other school yet. So, I mean, and that's fine. Budgetary, we've lost a lot of people in Connecticut, we've lost a lot of tax revenue in Connecticut. I was, said to my wife, moving back here from Marin County, "You really want to go home?"
Okay, hold on, I got to get back to Ms. Maxine Cunnelli.
First of all, I'm just curious, where did you move outside of Boston?
We moved to Wellesley.
Ah, okay.
Yes.
A little bit north of you, I was up in Bedford.
Is that white enough? Pretty white?
Yes, it is.
Let's be, let's call it what it is. Pretty white.
My town wasn't much different, so I hear you.
Yeah.
Just-
Yeah, let's-
What, one word about the, the temporary solutions that you reference-
Yes.
-is that that's something, actually, just to give you a little bit of history, is that this, the board, before any of us were serving, made a commitment to get rid of all temporary solutions, that that was an explicit goal, that all of these portables would go away.
Why?
So, because, number, one very significant factor, obviously, is that they deteriorate and have to be replaced. And so that by having bricks and mortar, it's a better financial investment. Secondly, is now safety is a huge issue. Getting to and from those portables involves, frequently with no supervision, moving from the main building out. And given the post, post Sandy Hook world, that is not deemed, that is deemed a safety risk. And so that's a significant part of why we are moving away from portables. Again, that was a commitment prior to us, but I don't believe it's a, one that we have been looking to deviate from.
Yeah, gotcha, gotcha. Yeah, I was here for Sandy Hook, so that was tough.
Ms. Gerber?
Well, I just wanted to, to go a little bit more on the whole idea of the portables. One thing that became a problem with the portable situation back, like in the early two thousands, or late nineties, early two thousands, for instance, a school like Dwight, which right now, its bricks and mortar capacity is three hundred and seventy-eight. Back, you know, twenty or odd years ago, they had over five hundred students at that school because of portables. But their gym was the size of a gym for a three hundred and seventy-eight student school, their cafeteria, you know, all of their core facilities, you know, the number of bathrooms, everything like that. So, while adding the portables on was helpful in the sense that the problem was Fairfield had closed too many schools and sold some of them off, so we didn't even have them to reopen, and so they started tacking portables onto schools. At one point, we had, I think, like sixty-odd portables in our district. And, you know, it really created issues, and this was before Sandy Hook, so there really weren't as many security concerns. I mean, there still were, not quite as dire as they are now, but, but nonetheless, one of the huge problems we had was the core facility strain that took place at so many of our schools, because they were built in a time when, you know, they were built for much smaller groups of students, and just simply adding on, you know, like bedrooms without adding on bathrooms and, you know, an extra living room, like you wouldn't have, you know, you add all of the space in a house if you put on a couple of bedrooms, but we were just putting on classrooms and not doing anything to help the core facilities, and it really put a strain, you know, back in the, you know, not that long ago. And so that was definitely a goal, was to get rid of the portables. And I will say, while we have added a tremendous amount of square footage, we also got rid of a lot of square footage, because, for instance, Osborne Hill, where my student, my children went, we had four portables when my kids were there. We took them away and added an annex that had five classrooms, so we only netted one classroom. And, and that's been the case at other schools, like, for instance, Riverfield got some of Osborne Hill's old portables, moved over there for a while. I think they had four or five portables for a while, they ended up getting a sixth classroom addition. So again, you only netted one classroom. And they also expanded the spaces, they added air conditioning, lots of other things, so, and then Holland Hill and Mill Hill were kind of the next on the list. Mill Hill is the last school on the long-term facilities plan that has any expansion potential. The other schools, there are no plans as of now in the long-range facilities plan to add additional space. They'll get upgrades, hopefully, air conditioning at some point, and other things, because a lot of these schools haven't been touched in a really long time since they were built, you know, in the fifties and sixties. But in terms of expanding the space, Mill Hill is really, as of now, in the long-range plan, the last step in expansion. It's really more now kind of renovating and making sure that the schools have all the smaller classrooms that we need for OT and PT and special ed and things like that, which when they were built in the fifties, those programs didn't exist. So you do need to add all those additional small spaces in addition to the general ed classrooms, so.
Okay.
Ms. Pitco?
I just wanna reiterate a point that, obviously not being a light topic, and having so many different data points that we need to look at, different variables that are gonna factor into a possible redistricting, we're looking for a long-term solution to many of these issues. We're not looking to put Band-Aids on or add temporary fixes, because we have to look at all eleven elementary schools and all the neighborhoods that exist, and where are people moving into the town, and, and the eight-thirty G affordable housing. All of that data that we can get from the town, that the board looks at, it's all important. That's why none of us are taking this lightly. We're doing it as transparent as we can, we're seeking input, and making probably one of the hardest decisions we'll ever have to make.
Mr. Dwyer, let's make it quick, I wanna move on to another speaker.
Fair enough. Another data point for you, that I didn't want you to think that we act slow because we just like to act slow.
Of course.
This town has a very wise finance policy, which is, we do not want to spend more than ten percent of our budget on principal and interest. This town was deleveraging long before anybody else was. And so therefore, the time it takes us to build a school really is because we have a hundred million dollars' worth of capital projects just for the school system. We have to space those projects out so that we comply with the town's ten percent rule, which we agree with. So it's not that we came up with an idea to do something in 2016 and we, quote, haven't gotten it done yet, it's because we didn't plan on getting it done, because you put one project after another, after another, in a very, in the waterfall chart. So it, there's, there's a rationale behind why it takes time.
Understood. I would ask you guys, just to, and I know I gotta wrap up, you know, and that's a fair number to talk to, I think that, given sometimes the scale and scope of problems, to start, you know, really looking at mass redistricting across an entire town, you know, maybe, maybe revisit those leverage levels, or revisit other opportunities within the federal side to try to bring in dollars, or even go through, as I, I saw when my folks actually ultimately moved out to Marin, which again, was fortunately, you know, had some wealth in the town, a number of people, they went out and did a number of fundraisers to try to help bolster, you know, what either the city and/or the state was unwilling or unable to provide for, either through various fundraisers, or galas, or what have you. But if it's a function of dollars that's driving a slowdown, and that's driving the, the, the building of facilities, you know, I'm just trying to figure out as a new guy moving in, what's driving this? If it's not the, the racial stuff, fine, put that over here. If it's space, how do you fix space? Now, it's money that's not, that's driving us, not getting space, you know what I'm saying?
You've already said this ten, ten minutes ago, and Mr. Raisa addressed it. I'd really like to move on to another speaker, please.
Got it.
Thank you.
No problem.
News, another speaker? Name and address, please.
Hi, good evening, Rainie Noor, eighty-three Alberta Street. I'm on the tail end of my public school experience, because my youngest is a sophomore in high school, and the oldest is a college senior, and in between there two more. I'd like to recommend all of you who, given have so much of your volunteer time, because none of this is a paid position, you're elected officials, and you're working, you're so very hard, year after year, for the town, so I really recommend you. I'd also like to point out that probably everybody in this room, and you, we're all playing on the same team, because we're all looking out for students and for children, and we're all trying to make the best for this next generation. So, that's sometimes something we lose a little bit of sight of when we talk about us and them, because we're really all on the same team here. And we are, as parents, I think it's at about thirty percent of households in Fairfield who have children in the public schools. We often, often get pitted against citizens of Fairfield who don't have children in the public school. And especially when you're in the budget deliberations, you hear that quite a bit. And even though we're all Fairfielders, we get put on different teams as if we're all, you know, against one another. And I really feel we're having a lot of work to do to have that cohesiveness, that without children, a town loses. Without seniors, a town loses. But we're having a tendency to always kind of club into smaller groups, and then look at others as being, you know, against us, or not good for us. So that's just out there, and I'm just saying that. Another point I'm here is, I'd like to thank the board and the school district for their fantastic support of Fairfield Cares Community Coalition, which is the town's prevention council. And a lot of people alluded to the mental health aspect that, you know, redistricting might affect, that is, you know, a big topic in town, and our children have a lot to contend with that people in different generations didn't. School safety is a big mental health thing. There was just today, a, a short lockdown at Stradfield School while there was a suspect being chased on foot through town, but the kids, as they were there, didn't know that. So, you know, these are stresses that children maybe didn't contend with when we were young. So, we see a lot of stresses causing, you know, anxiety, causing self-medication, causing substance misuse, and that's where Fairfield Cares comes in. And I recommend the district for the tremendous support that you've been giving us by allowing surveys to take place, to, so we can see what's going right in children's lives, but also what's not going right in children's lives. And I would like to see that collaboration to continue down the line, because it has a direct impact on how we as a town can operate, what we need, as a town, need to focus on in order to provide resources and support to bolster positive mental health. So, thank you for letting me on my little soapbox here, and yay, solar carpets!
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, it's Will Regan, one thirty-two Charles Street. Besides hashtag Sherman Walkers, we'll do, oh, yeah. The question that I had is on the, the overall transparency for this whole process. Just looking today, trying to get informed. Thank you, the two of you, for, you know, all the posts that you have, really helpful. But we found it hard, my wife and I found it hard, in the, you know, public pages to find a good, comprehensive review of all the things, besides the meeting minutes that have already taken place. Is there something that, that we missed, or if not, you know, can we make a recommendation to sort of improve that transparency for the town, given the meaning of the subject, you know, the meaningfulness of the subject?
Mrs. Gerber?
Well, since we don't have any plans yet, they aren't posted, but they will be posted, and I guess if you wanted to look at past, the Melona McBroom report from 2016, there is a page on the Fairfield Public Schools website under the racial imbalance, because originally that report back in 2016 was done kind of in concert with the racial imbalance discussions that were taking place at that time. So that, all of that plan from 2016 with maps and, and details and everything like that, is on the Fairfield Public Schools website under the racial imbalance. I think it has the date, it's like February 2016.
I think not so much the, the plan, which I would hope would be made public when it's, when it's available, but so much as like, what is the process that we're stepping through, and how do we get transparency into that? Like, sort of before some Facebook post yesterday and today, I had no clue this was happening, and I had no way of coming up with how, like, what, what you all grown through, right?
Well, for now, the majority of that is meeting agendas and, and minutes, which are posted on, and Fair TV as well, which is a great resource to have, because all of our meetings are recorded, and you can watch them on demand anytime they're online on the Fairfield, Town of Fairfield website. So, I mean, back in August was when we initially started having the conversations about our board goal, which was related to redistricting being one aspect of that. So if you look at the meeting agenda, you'll see when it, you know, the discussion, and then you look at the minutes, and you can, and the minutes are fairly detailed, and then you can also go to Fair TV to watch the recording of that. I think, I know, I've heard a lot of emails from a lot of Sherman parents over the past few days. I did put together a sheet of every single set of meeting minutes, agendas, and Fair TV recordings, and I've been sending them to any and all Sherman parents, so you might wanna ask around, I don't believe I, I sent you an email, but I'm sure there's somebody you may know who might be able to pass that along to you, or if you wanna send me an email, my Board of Ed email, I'm happy to send it to you. So that'll just kind of put it all in one place, so you can kind of go through and see. But we don't have, let's say, like, a document, as of now, that kind of spells it all out in a small, concise way. It really is the conversations that have taken place from August until now.
Ms. Max and Cannelli?
Um, one of the things, 'cause I'm not gonna repeat that, the document she's referencing is pretty amazing. And obviously, as things come up, but the one thing that would be very useful for anyone listening on TV, for everyone in the audience, is that every single one of, and obviously this is directed at people who are in the schools, every single PTA has a Board of Ed rep. And I can't encourage each PTA enough to say, you might wanna specifically engage that Board of Ed rep in a conversation of, we especially want updates on this topic communicated back. I mean, we blast the information out. I think every one of your email, every one of your PTAs probably has an email flyer which said, next Board of Ed meeting is, you know, this date. But it might be a really good idea to advocate to your PTA, can we please have a specific, you know, because this will be on the agenda of probably all, yeah, I was guessing that. You know, this will be something on the agenda, certainly both May meetings, both June meetings. I'm not sure specifically what on each, but once we leave for the summer, exactly what comes up in the fall, if that Board of Ed rep specifically is engaged with really paying attention to what's on the agenda, and blasting that out to your community, I would think that would be something that hopefully each individual PTA could rely on, but it would be a person specifically, I would think, would be good to engage.
Ms. Raisa?
Just to follow up on that, I was actually gonna say the same thing about that each PTA has BOE reps. But in the document that Mrs. Gerber put together, I think it's fairly comprehensive, and it actually links to, my suggestion for you to catch up, when you have absolutely nothing to do, would be to click on the links in her document, and she actually, I believe, puts, did you put timestamps to, or? Yeah, there's actually timestamps, so you can fast forward to the portion where we talked, and I think you'd be surprised by watching these, you'll, you'll see the discussion and how it transpired, and you might be able to come to a realization of how we got here, and then moving forward, like they said, if you can't come to a meeting, obviously watching it on demand. And then as we progress, as things progress, there, there will likely be a timeline and everything like that, so.
Mr. Dwyer?
If you've not gone through our website, the Board of Education has more of its documents and more of its discussions and minutes and agendas and reports that we have received on our website than the Board of Selectment, the Board of Finance, and the RTM combined. And so the website is a tremendous opportunity to kind of see what we're, information we're looking at. The second thing is that we do have a, quote, "Friday packet." And you might want to say, no, I'm gonna sign in every time and download the Friday packet, because it gives a kind of a good indication of issues that we're dealing with every Friday. And that might be a, another document you, you would find helpful. If we put a summary document together, it could be two inches thick of all the information that we're looking at in order to come to a conclusion. So it's hard to summarize these kind of issues, because there's so many intersecting parts.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Last thing is, you know, obviously, it's a difficult task, so thank you guys for this.
Name and address, please.
Peggy McAluso, three twenty-two Riverside Drive. I have a different perspective, because I, when I first married, I married a Fairfield native. We lived here for ten years. It was the late eighties, building permits were all over the place, no plans for Fairfield Woods, and it was growing every single day, and I had small children. And Board of Education at that time really couldn't make a decision, so nothing happened. So I urge you to make a decision, good, bad, or otherwise, 'cause as Mr. Dwyer says, if today you decide to build a new school, you're not gonna see it for four years, and a lot happens in four years. So anyway, in the early nineties, I moved to Easton. As much as I liked Fairfield, Easton at the time had a better school system. So we went there, then that became crowded. So Easton decided to build an eleven-hundred-student elementary school, rather than build a second elementary school. That's how strongly those people felt about redistricting, or having two elementary schools. They'd rather have one huge elementary school than two. So that's something to consider. I know this town totally different, you have a lot of small elementary schools. Don't think a bigger elementary school won't work, because it will. They also, because of, you know, the population, they took for a while the fifth grade out of the middle school and put it into the elementary school. That's something else to consider. When I was in high school in Norwalk, they actually, because of overcrowding, took all the Brian McMahon ninth graders and put them in a separate building. So the ninth graders, Brian McMahon were one school, and ten, twelve was in another. So you have to kind of think about that, because people really feel strongly about redistricting. The other issue that comes up, if you live in Easton, is they go to a regional high school. Well, you have Reading students and Easton students. They each have their good strengths and their weaknesses. And you, you find that out, Reading kids do better in English, or math, or depending on what year it is. You get that here, too. So if you decide that, you know, Holland Hill now goes to, you know, Fairfield Woods, and you wanna send them to Fairfield Ludlow, that really impacts the programming at the middle school. Because the middle schools are designed to know that we have these four elementary schools coming in, we have a history of those four elementary schools, we know how to teach to those kids. If you throw a different elementary school into the middle school, you're looking at different weaknesses, different strength that you have to address. I also sat on two building committees while I was in Easton, and we talked about classrooms and programs and lunch lines and gym sizes, and, let me tell you, the middle school came in over the budget. We went to Board of Finance, the Board of Finance said, you have to cut the budget of the construction, and we can't find that much money. Unfortunately, the building committee, which I didn't agree with, cut four classrooms. That made a huge difference down the road. That made a huge difference down the road. That four classrooms could have handled that 5th grade that had been moved out of the school. So when you talk about new schools, and constructions, and programs, keep in mind that the idea is to have classroom space. A bigger media center is nice, bigger lunch lines, you know, shorter lines. I know those have to be taken into consideration, but the primary goal is classroom space. That's what you're looking for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Peterson.
Thanks for your comments, and I appreciate the Easton perspective. It's always interesting to hear what our neighbors have done and their experiences. A couple of issues. I would say, first, one of the top priorities of this board, and in my experience in the administration as well, is equity between schools. You bring up the notion that Easton kids bring one thing, and Redding kids bring one thing. Although I think that there is a perception that one school may be better than another, that's not something that we have as a value on this board. We don't, we don't want that. We want a kid anywhere in Fairfield to get an equivalent education, whatever, wherever that kid may go, whatever high school they go to. I just want to say that that's a value that we, that we have.
Right. And like I said, that changes year to year, and that has a lot to do with program, and teachers, and, you know, demographics, a lot of things.
And I would also say that, in my experience talking to the middle school teachers that I know, they, they are very much in tune with the kids who are coming in from the elementary schools, and what kids may have gaps in what area. So I do have great faith in the staff to manage whatever, whatever that would bring. Another thing that I would, I would say, I've heard for years, especially since we deconsolidated the high schools, a lot of people saying, we should have stuck with one high school. Town that I came from had one high school, it worked great. And while there are advantages to that, and I think there are advantages to consider, advantages, disadvantages with larger buildings, one of the constraints that I see in thinking about planning in Fairfield is lack of space. You know, think about one high school, well, if we had a lot that could accommodate one high school, and the town could buy it, then it would be a simpler matter to say, we're going to build one high school there, and when it's done, we're going to close our two high schools and move everyone into that. We simply don't have that luxury in Fairfield anymore. Fairfield is very deeply developed, and there's, there's not an abundance of land for that sort of, that sort of project, which, you know, has me, gives me pause when I think about, do we really want to take and adopt a model of larger elementary school sizes? Which I know that some districts have. I, you know, talked to representatives from other districts, and obviously, every town does it in a, in a, in a different way. I just, I feel like the space that we have available to us landwise in town is a big constraint. And I know that, that factors a lot into my thinking about the issue.
Ms. Leeper.
Just want to build off what Mr. Peterson just said, and talk about, this is one of the reasons, as a board, we've been advocating for the 504 model at Mill Hill. You only get an opportunity every 20 years or so to really add space to a specific facility. And it really is only a few classrooms has an opportu, the potential to have a big impact, especially when you don't know what the next 20 years could bring. And, you know, we don't make these decisions in a vacuum. So we provide the information that we can, and then also have to respect the other town bodies as these decisions go through the natural process. But I hear what you're saying, and I think we've been receptive to the idea of taking the opportunity when we're given it, as a facility comes up in the waterfall, to optimize that project. And now that we're looking at two ECCs relocating Walter Fitzgerald, and a lot of other facility challenges, we realize that having a few extra classrooms really does benefit the district. But thank you.
And just for record, I have two grandchildren here. My grandson is in Riverfield, he went to pre-K in Dwight, and my granddaughter is now going to pre-K in Straffield. So I pretty much have been touring all the schools since I've got to town again.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi. Marnie White, 29 Shoreham Village Drive. I emailed all of you earlier, but I might have sent it to the wrong address. Do you happen to know if you received it? You did? Okay, I'll send it to the longer one, but I'm going to try to summarize it really briefly here now. It's somewhat to echo and expand on some of the concerns that were brought up by Jim Curley and Scott Weisberg earlier. And kind of with respect to the consultants that have been commissioned specifically, and whether or not there has been any consideration of bringing in an educational consultant. Specific, I mean, I understand, obviously, town planners are important for some of these feeder issues, and that cannot be ignored. But looking at the masthead of that organization, there's not anyone involved who is an educator, or who has any experience in educational systems. They're architects, town planners, and engineers. And so I'm wondering whether there are any empirical experts or consultants, perhaps even volunteers, who would have an eye toward educational and psychosocial outcomes for the children. Mr. Curley brought up a point as to whether or not you all were aware of or planned to conduct any research, specifically zeroing in on educational or psychosocial outcomes. I've done an exhaustive literature search on exactly that question, and to date, I have not been able to find a single article saying that any sort of forced move, as in brought about by redistricting, has null effects or positive effects. In fact, all of the effects are significant and deleterious with respect to academic outcomes, meaning not only grades fall in the year after a school move, standardized test scores drop, significant decreases in reading and in math. And these effects are even more profound for children with special education needs, and for children who are ethnic minorities. So as an educator myself, and as a clinical psychologist, I'm particularly zeroing in on these as being of a top priority and a top consideration. And I would request, or, you know, wonder your thoughts on whether or not it would be reasonable to bring in someone who was actually an educational consultant in helping to make these decisions and to look at these data. And then, so the academic outcomes are clear. The even greater effect sizes are with respect to psychosocial outcomes, and kids who have been redistricted show significant increases in depression and anxiety, social isolation, school dropout, and behavioral problems in the long term. So has there been any consideration of bringing in educational consultants in, in helping to develop these plans?
Ms. Vitale.
There has not been a discussion at the board level of bringing in educational consultant. I think in part that we rely on our educators that we have in district, our psychologists, our social workers. My oldest went through the last elementary school redistricting. She stayed at Dwight, most of her friends went to Burr. At that time, we had a lot of people come up from Mill Hill talking about the redistricting, that type of a move. And a lot of effort was made by the parent community, knowing that a redistricting was coming, of making sure, you, you formed those bonds before the move happened. PTAs worked very closely together, trying to merge them together, playdates were set up, schools had social gatherings. So kids made friends before they were moved. It's something that I, you know, I think that's what we struggle with when we talk about redistricting. I think that is really the core of why it is so, such a difficult discussion. Because in terms of moving from one school to the other, as Mr. Peterson said, all of our schools in Fairfield are wonderful. Now, where you end up, you're going to, kids are going to be, they're going to thrive where, wherever they go. There's going to be an adjustment at first, but kids are very resilient, and our schools are very equitable on that.
I think they are, but the reason to showing that the children today are maybe not as resilient as those 10 years ago. You know, we are seeing an epidemic of mental health problems.
Yeah, they, we are, which is why I think that when we're talking about moving, we need to be cognizant of that, and we need to rely on staff. But that's a discussion that the board really does rely on our educators for, and that's going to be a discussion point if we do move forward in this, in making sure the kids have support.
Sorry.
Ms. Pitco.
So in our five-year strategic plan, one of the things that we looked at is the transitions from 5th grade to 6th grade, 8th grade to 9th grade. And I, too, was concerned when my preschooler went from the ECC into kindergarten. And I knew there would be staff support, but the staff here does put a plan together for kids when they're transitioning. If anybody's ever had a 6th grader, I did, I taught middle school for 10 years, 6th graders have a hard time transitioning from that elementary school model, you know, the locker's the big thing in 6th grade. That would be the same thing in this case. And that's why it would be so important, that whatever we come up with is a long-term solution, so that we don't have to keep revisiting this and putting kids and parents and staff through this. But most definitely, I would rely on the staff and the superintendent to come up with a plan to help with the transition.
Thank you. Agreed.
Ms. Maxine Canelli.
Just briefly, I want to piggyback on what Mrs. Vitale said. I think that, that move of Dwight and Burr, as an example, I think the PTAs will play a vital role in this, and they're going to have a lot of lead time for planning this, because I don't think the supports are just for the children. You know, we've had many of these parents speak to the supports that they, as parents, rely on. I'm, I'm late coming from, you know, the Holland Hill parent who spoke about, I was late getting there, I had to reach out to a parent to help with this. That's very much a part of the support that this community relies on. It's why neighborhood schools are so important to us, because I can rely on my neighbor in, in various events. So I think that's going to be a vital factor for this, is that transition, not just academically, which our staff is well-trained in, but also how the PTAs will be involved, not only with helping the children to transition, but also parents being introduced to new and wonderful communities. I think that those together are going to be vital, assuming this moves, if this moves forward, that with so much lead time of, let's have that conversation. I would think PTA council, for example, would also get active in, how can they help facilitate such support? Because I agree, otherwise, this is certainly not something that's just going to be dropped on anybody.
Ms. Jacobson.
I'm thinking that, you know, since the board has not decided on the scope and breadth of this plan, or any plan at this point, that a lot of factors, I think that's great that we're having this before we talk about our principles, because I think hopefully that will inform some of that conversation next week, if that's on the agenda. But also, I'm thinking, depending on the breadth of the scope, that necessarily one-size-fits-all isn't always the best methodology. And since it has been quite a long time since we've had a K-12 redistricting, that perhaps, depending on where this board goes, that there may be different contemplation depending on level and considerations, because, you know, a nine-year-old is not the same as a 16-year-old, so, you know, or a 13-year-old. So I'm trying to think holistically on that, and we don't necessarily need to be boxed into any set of criteria, but to really contemplate a little bit better on that. So thank you for your input. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi. Hi, I'm Mary Hoag, 165 Stonewall Lane, and I'm a member of the Sustainable Fairfield Task Force. And I just, I'm so excited to hear about the interest in walking and biking, that just really warms my heart. And of course, I'm interested in promoting the solar, it's not just solar carports, it's also, there is a rooftop in there. And it's actually four schools, Holland Hill is now included in it, too. So there's, we just updated the website, so if you want to see what the new plans are, as Rabab had mentioned, there really has been a lot of changes, because there's been a lot of feedback and responsiveness to that feedback. So it's not meant to be confusing, it's meant to be, to show that we're trying the best we can to get what will be the best for the community and for the schools. But I also wanted to mention that this is sort of a confluence, it's like the perfect storm of planning for the town, because we're doing our strategic planning, and we're doing our POCDR, I'm sorry, our Plan of Conservation and Development. And we talked a lot about zoning, and of course, the conservation and development fits into that, because it's done by the zoning department. So I really encourage everyone in, that's interested in this topic related to the redistricting and what's happening for future planning, to get involved and to find out more about those plans as well. Because they really should all inform and feed off of each other. And I think also importantly is, get involved with your PTAs. I was a PTA president four times over, so I'm, I'm an addict. I'm a reformed addict, because my kids are actually graduating out of college. And I have to tell you that they loved and look back on their time at the Fairfield Public Schools as the best of ever. And when we were in elementary school and moving on to middle school, and I was passing baton, I mentioned that, you know, elementary school is this beautiful cocoon, and you're warm and safe, and it's wonderful, and it seems so scary to leave that, that place. Not just the kids, it's probably harder for the parents, I think, it was for me. And I can tell you that the kids are so well-served in our school system, and I really appreciate this board in particular. You've done a great job in serving the community. So I just want to assure the people that have younger children that you get through it, and somehow magically, you get these wonderful adults at the end of it, and the Fairfield Public Schools really make a big difference in that. So thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, good evening. Gray Peckham, 36 Shoreham Terrace. First of all, thank you all for this. It's pretty late. I didn't realize you guys stayed so late.
You have no idea.
Sure. I'm sure. But anyway, thanks again. I have three kids here in the system, a high school, a middle school, and a 5th grader. And my 5th grader's got a good bit of learning disabilities. And in hearing this come up a couple of times about the general principles and how the effects on redistricting are considered for the outcomes of the kids educationally, I would encourage you to really think hard about that. For certain, certain populations, particularly learning disabilities or special needs, change is tough for those kids. Or for mine, anyway, I can't speak for everybody, but I know routine and familiarity with his special ed teachers is a huge, huge thing. And so it sounds to me like it may not really be a strong consideration. But I would really urge that you guys take a look at that. And that's all I'll say about that. Moving on to my second item, I kind of think it's important for you to hear the voice of a Sherman busing family. What? We're like weird, we're like weird unicorns here, but we do exist. And, you know, we're no less part of that Sherman community. There are no logical geographic schools for us to go to. Otherwise, we'd have to cross the Post Road, we'd have to cross 95, past Home Depot, wherever you're going to send these kids. And we've heard that Shoreham Terrace, year after year, is always on the, on the cut, because we're on the fringes of this Sherman neighborhood. But really, it's, I would just say, in this meeting setting here, hearing the overabundance of concern for Sherman walkers, I would say, just know that there are other people out there at Sherman, and I worry a little bit that if the thought going into this is to keep walkers walkers, and that's your only guiding principle on Sherman, it's a little bit easier to carve us off and send us somewhere else to keep your walkers happy. So actually, that's it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Hi, Bonnie Rotelli, Merritt Street. I am, I'm not going to repeat myself from the other times I've spoken about the ECC, but I will give one final plea. I think the long-term solution for the ECC needs to be in one location, and I realize what that means from a facility standpoint. I also know, I've, I sat through all of the redistricting committee meetings the last go-around, and I know, after attending these meetings for quite a few years, that it's probably inevitable that a comprehensive redistricting is going to happen. So I'd like to say that, for me, this year, it has, it speaks volumes, that the staff of the ECC has been such a persistent force, coming here since September, advocating for these kids. That program is so special, and I know that, as Mr. Peterson said before, most people might not realize what that program means to our kids. And I also realized, from what Mr. Dwyer had said earlier, that when you talk about repurposing an elementary school, you know, you're going to upset a large group of people one way or another. Well, in redistricting in general, we're going to be upsetting somebody. But I just want us to keep in mind, when we're talking about But I just want us to keep in mind, when we're talking about why we're doing this, or why we would consider this for the ECC, is because we might be a small population, but we are the most vulnerable population, and these kids need that early intervention. And it is such a successful program, that my fear is, I know we have temporarily split the ECC next year with the four classrooms at Stratfield, because of poor planning. This has been on the radar for most of us who have been involved there for a very long time. So when I heard at that, one of the last meetings, where it suddenly became okay to make the long-term solution in two locations, it just felt so disappointing, because inevitably, what's going to happen is if the solution is Burr and Holland Hill, like was presented, or Holland Hill and McKinley, eventually, we're going to have four classrooms at Holland Hill, four classrooms at McKinley, and then what happens when that shift in population for that district goes up, and they need to reclaim some classrooms, and then it's going to be like, okay, well, we'll just siphon off another classroom to Mill Hill, and maybe we'll put one at Dwight. And then it has literally dismantled the ECC. So I am begging you guys to reconsider looking for one dedicated space for a long-term solution. And I think that when you look back at the results from the SPED audit, and you see how successful our staff has been with the rate, with, you know, their insane ratios that they've been having to deal with because of the population increase, that school's only getting bigger. The administration wants to make the ratios 50-50. You're talking about at least 250 kids. That is a small elementary school. You know those numbers are only going to grow. So I'm just making one final plea, to please reconsider a long-term, one-location solution for the ECC. And also, just to take another note, as a Stratfield family, we have a huge walking population to that school, and many, as Ms. Maxine Cannelly had said before, many of our walkers could walk to two separate schools. And we have a population of Stratfield families who could walk to Woods, but are bused 40 minutes across town to Tomlinson, and it happens, and they're okay. And, you know, it's, someone is always going to be upset in these scenarios. We can't make everybody happy. So, that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Peterson?
Thanks, thanks for your perspective. I know the ECC issue is kind of, is a deeply felt issue, and I do believe the ECC staff has been a very able advocate for their, for their program. Just to kind of piggyback a little bit on, a little bit of context on what I think the issue is about repurposing an elementary school. I think it's not entirely a disruption issue. The way I approached this, when I started thinking about this months ago, I thought that that might be an excellent solution to the problem. Then I crunched the numbers over and over and over again, and my concern, running a bunch of scenarios about it, was that if we remove an elementary school amount of seats from our total elementary school seat capacity, that that's going to come back to haunt us later, when, as our demographic surveys show, I believe to be the case, our population is going to go back up. And my feeling in doing that math was that it's going to run into that, we're going to have, we're going to have a collision of those two things. I do believe the ECC needs dedicated space. I do believe that we have an obligation to that program, to give it what it needs. I just, it's difficult for me, having run those scenarios, to imagine taking an entire elementary school out of, out of circulation. And that's, so it's, it's, I'm just, I'm just saying, like, from my perspective, it's not entirely about not wanting to disrupt, because I don't want to disrupt the ECC either. I would rather have kind of a one-and-done situation, where we are in a position to provide for them for years to come.
Ms. Bitko?
I know the board is well-aware of my position on the ECC, but maybe people who are just turning in for the first time aren't aware. My daughter attended for two and a half years and is now a kindergarten gardener, and I owe the staff at the ECC everything. My daughter would not have progressed to be the happy, silly child who's now learning to talk without them. I have seen firsthand, through many of her friends, what they are capable of there. So I can only personally advocate for a one model. My fear in moving, if we do, to two different sites, is that we will once again outgrow that space, and this will be a Band-Aid on a short-term solution. If you're going to stick to a 50-50 model, then you're going to outgrow eight classrooms. And that's going to happen really quickly, because if you give it the percentage of increase that they grow every year, this is not a long-term solution. You could call it whatever you like, but it's not. And we brought this up the first time, we cannot guarantee that the two-site model is equitable. We just can't guarantee that, and people will always be wondering that. My bigger fear is that we are going to pit kids against each other, and I don't want to do that either. I want to make sure that all children are getting their equitable education. This weighs heavily on me, four years on the board, and I, sitting here, can't believe that this is something that's on me. But I am well-aware of the issues that are in front of us. I don't take them lightly. I have to worry about both, either repurposing a school, and those students that are affected, and the children who are at the beginning of their education, who need that intensive therapy and that model that the ECC proposes to them.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Bob Smoller. I'm president of the Fairfield Education Association, and I just wanted to bring up an issue, which I've spoken to all of you about. Personally, we're talking about managing a lot of change here today, and that's on top of the considerable amount of change that we manage on a daily basis. Education's changing rapidly, the district is changing rapidly. Some of it's because of external issues, whether it be mandates, some of it's because of internal things, whether it be a new initiative, a new textbook, whatever. And every change that we make has an impact on existing programs. You can't add a program to an elementary school without affecting everything else that's going on in an elementary school already. You can't add a STEM program without affecting the operation of everything else that's going on in an elementary school program. And so what I would really encourage you to do, as you think through these issues, is we need to have a holistic mechanism for managing all the change that's taking place. Our administrators, who I heard, one of you mentioned, you'll get a plan from our administrators, our administrators were hired for their educational expertise and their educational excellence. They are pros in the educational field. They have their O-92s, their O-93s, they came up through the classrooms, many of them, many of them have superior expertise in the special ed area, but few of them have hardcore expertise in operational and change management. And we're a big organization, we're a $168 million business. I mean, we can, we can talk about ourselves as a, as a public school district, but we are managing a large organization. And so what I worry about, as we talk about these issues, and as an advocate for the teachers who end up executing or having to execute all of that's going on, is that we won't have the singular focus on the holistic changes that are taking place in our district to make sure that everything goes as smoothly as possible. So I would encourage you to think about, in addition to the guiding principles that you're considering for redistricting, to come up with some principles regarding the holistic management of change that we're talking about. It's a pretty grand scale that you're talking about. A holistic way, I don't know if it's a person, or a committee, or whatever it is, but we need the operational expertise to properly bring this home, to properly make sure that Fairfield doesn't suffer in the programs that we already are providing, as we try to execute this change. So that was the only, the only comment that I wanted to make. We're not great at it right now. I'm hoping that we will get better at it, but I certainly think, as, as we're getting bigger and as things are moving much more quickly, it's an area that we need to focus on. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Maxine Cannelly?
Using that as a springboard, Mr. Smoller, I will say that that's something which we, as a board, have not discussed, but it's a personal view of mine, that I'm very interested in pursuing with our interim superintendent, and then going forward, because we don't know the timeframe on that. But our taking a year, I mean, my idea is a year of reflection. I really think it will be very worthwhile for us, as we are wrapping up a district improvement plan, to take a year. Now, while we don't have a chief operating officer, you know, we don't have a COO, we still have an awful lot of expertise out there, and then we have a lot of people who could help us manage a year of reflection on initiatives of, and I'm picking this randomly, the past five years, the past seven years, because we have rolled out from Chromebooks to STEM, to work with our English language learners, to word language in the elementary school, to block schedule in the high school. We have a tremendous amount we've rolled out, elementary school math textbooks, and to take the time to look back on those and reflect what has worked well, what's been sufficiently supported, what has not proven to be the worthwhile investment that we wanted. Is it fixable? Is it something that needs to be cut loose? I actually, and I've already spoken with one staff member, just who unfortunately got on the opposite end of a table from me, and so I went off on it. But I really think that that, that your idea is something, and this is a perfect time to do that, that it's really important that we do so. With the budget as tight as it's going to be, to have a good year of, maybe let's reinvest time in things that we have been rolling out, and let's see what we can't do better, take a deeper dive on ourselves, as opposed to spreading thin out to something new. But that's not something I've talked to the board about, so here you go.
If I might offer just one comment regarding that. Any idea, any good idea could be a mediocre or a bad thing to implement, if it's not implemented with fidelity. And generally speaking, when we roll out initiatives, we don't have an implementation plan that includes a communication plan, a technology plan, a training plan. And so knowing that we are under a tight budget situation, we oftentimes don't do things the easy way. And so when we go back, as you talk about, and reflect on, did it work, did it not work, maybe it would have worked if we would have implemented it with fidelity, but maybe it didn't work, because we didn't do the things that we should have done upfront, in order to produce the outcome we wanted from the idea to begin with. So, you know, this is an issue for you to decide. I don't know a $168 million organization that doesn't have a chief operating officer. You know, just as a matter of making sure you have consistency across your organization, and as a matter of making sure you have the most efficient methods of operation in place, having a mechanism to focus on process and outcome is a general foundation of an organization. We are a outstanding educational institution, who is changing rapidly, and I think, we want to think sooner rather than later, as a person, a teacher, who is on the end of having to execute this stuff, and also a representative of all the people who are on the front lines, trying to, you know, put in place all the initiatives of the district and of management, we feel it every day, and it's a struggle.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other speakers?
Good evening. Lindsay Swan Young, 348 Barris Street. I am currently a mom to two kids in Sherman, two kids to come in in the next year and the following year. I hope I'm not beating a dead drum, or a broken drum, at this point. We are currently zoned for busing. My children have never taken the bus. We have either walked, biked, scooted, walked backwards, or on the occasional car ride due to inclement weather. I hope to just keep on the forefront of your brain that my third daughter currently receives services. She will go into Sherman with an IEP, and she is counting down the days until she's there. Her older brother and older sister are there, and she follows a very strict routine, a very strict chart, that when deviated from, causes major issues. And her mental health is very concerning to our family, as we know that she will struggle with this, if this is implemented in the next two years. She will have been at Sherman, she will then be moved from Sherman if this may come to fruition. So I just ask that you keep that in your thought process when moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Ryan Young, 329 Shoreham Village Drive. So, most of my notes would quite literally be beating the dead horse at this point, so I'll move to something that has really come up throughout the evening, and that is about data points, data sets, operational efficiency, and finally, subject matter experts. So, starting with data points, we are in a time where there is more data around us than we know what to do with. And you all are in a position right now, where, I should also back this up, saying, in my previous career, I was in educational technology for eight years, and now I manage a IT engineering and data science company. But you're in a, in a great time in technology, in that they've finally figured out how to bring all the data together, and actually correlate the data, search the data. And what I've seen, in my experience, I can't speak for your district, and I'm new to Fairfield for about a year and a half, but in my experience, in education, education technology, most of data's not properly being recorded. It's still being handled on paper, and being, you know, discussed in ways that isn't properly correlated or tracked. And as we go through this experience, I think it's important that not only are you looking at, you know, the data sets you have, but defining how to properly track as many data points as you possibly can, and get them into a data lake. Not just for this process, but for other districts going down the road, as educators, educating other educators, in terms of what can happen. You're, you're in a great space to do that. So the, the next thing that, operational efficiencies. So one of the things that I do, in my job, is help IT companies figure out how to be more efficient, but it doesn't obviously really apply to this conversation. But the one thing that I will recommend, is if you all have some free time, there's a, I know, I know, thank you, by the way, for volunteering. The, there's a book called The Phoenix Project. It's actually written by a, three, three people in the technology space, that were trying to explain the, the conditional story of small businesses and underfunded companies, and how they struggle with not being able to properly fund programs, and how those programs become essentially compost bins for the actual company's revenue and budgets. It's, while it is fiction, it was written by three people that are well-known in the industry for optimization and efficiency, and it's a very good read, and will help you take a good look at looking at flow, process flow, not just from the IT standpoint, but, you know, from your operations team, to your building, building and facilities, to long-term planning and waterfalls, you know, kind of all of that, and saying, well, wait a minute, let's take a step back and look at fixing things, so it becomes a rhythmic flow. I mean, here's an example. I just, my wife and I just signed our sign-up for Sherman, and the amount of paperwork, not forms online, paperwork, was huge. Phone calls after being, being there to confirm that there were no allergies, all those are process flows that are taking away from not only multiple departments within your organization's time, which is an inefficiency, and kind of a waste of budget. We weren't given an online portal until, you know, we had essentially completed the paperwork process. So there's a lot of things along the way that can be fixed, that you're going to find free up a ton of money, that will help you dedicate resources to areas like properly figuring out redistricting with figuring out redistricting with a budget and a data set that you need to have. And finally, I'll finish on SMEs. I totally agree with Marnie. I think that while I know you're, you're leveraging the, the resources in-house that are kind of like learned institutional knowledge, there are subject matter experts who focus only on those data sets, and have experience in areas that you might not necessarily have. So I encourage you to look not only at your consultants that you have, but also psychological and, what's the other one you had? And educational SMEs, because I think you're going to need as much help as you can get. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, we're coming up on 10:30, so we're going to have to start wrapping this up soon.
Hi, my name's Gina Dignan. I live at 58 Clinton Street, but I also am an employee of the district. I work at Burr as one of the language arts specialists, and I really came here to just kind of figure out what was going on with the redistricting. And so, thank you very much for the information, but I just have one suggestion. I'm a new employee in Fairfield, and it, I appreciate, Ms. Gerber, that you put together the information for the meetings and things like that, but I think what has happened is like one piece of paper gets out, and there's no rationale on that piece of paper. So like, I'm talking about the draft of the, the principles, the guiding principles. So, one thing that I think might be helpful with transparency is when you put the guiding principles together, if you can include the why, once you decide on the why, like, because it sounds like there's different competing whys for why redistricting is going to happen, or maybe happen, or be planned for. And just, you know, 20 years in education, we have to say what the goal is, and then kind of put the steps in place to reach that goal, and at least with student learning expectations. And I think that the public will be understanding and more, because you can see, people care, you know, you guys care because that's why you're here doing this work until 10:30. And I just think that if we're, if we're in for transparency, that we should just set the goal, like, and I know that you have to discuss that and decide what the goals are and what the steps are up to that goal, and I think people will be more receptive to this big disruption in their lives. And I know that you're faced with this big, big project, and I, it will affect my family, but I do have faith in the district. I think that everybody has good intentions, but I also want to reiterate that I do think that having an educational consultant, or I know there's a lot of expertise in this district, but especially at the elementary level, teachers and administrators and people in my position, we really are stretched pretty thin, and it was interesting that Bob just brought up the ideas of all these initiatives, because it is very hard on elementary teachers especially, because they have to deal with all of it, because they teach everything. So, anyway, that's just my suggestion, if you, if you, when you decide on the guiding principles on that same paper, if you put the rationale and the purpose, and then maybe a link to a timeline, or a proposed timeline, because it's, you know, things change because of budgets and things like that. But, thank you very much.
Thank you. How many more we got? Two? Okay, two more, that's it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Name and address?
Yeah, I'm Mark Joyella, from 64 Shoreham Village Drive, and I was going to tell you I have two daughters in Sherman, but I actually don't. I have one who's in third grade, and I have a daughter who's about to turn four, who only feels like that's her school, from having gone to all the after-school events and all of the programs and visits and art shows and book fairs. She believes that's her school, and the prospect of having to tell her, no, that's not going to be your school, is, that's, that, you know, that's a, that's a heavy thought. The only thing I, I think that hasn't been said that I would like to leave you with is that, you know, I have no doubt that no matter what you decide to do, that the teachers, the PTA, the parents will all rally to try and minimize the impact of the decision on the students, and especially the elementary school students who are maybe going to have a hard time with this. However, I think that as you decide your guiding principles, I hope that you would put the impact on the students in that process, so as to minimize the work that has to be done on the tail end of this by parents, PTA, and teachers. And if you can factor what the emotional and learning impact will be of deciding, no, we're not going to, say, you can't cross a boundary like the post road, I think that that is, that is the time to factor in what that means to a child. For our, for our kids, if you say, we might have you cross the post road, then that means that my girls can't walk to school, nor can they bike to school when they get older. We, you know, in elementary school, that would dramatically change their experience. So, I think that for all the criteria you decide on, I, I hope that you would consult someone who could give you at least an idea of what these various criteria mean to kids, and, and not wait until somebody draws maps to start thinking about that. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Gerber?
Yeah, I did, I, I know it's come up a couple of times, talking about the boundaries and crossing the post road and crossing 95, and, you know, one of the reasons why that was broached as something that wasn't necessarily something that the board was going to have be like a deal breaker, is because we already have students who cross the post road every day going to their elementary school. South of the post road, you have children going to Riverfield every day. You have children going to Mill Hill every day. So, even though those are in our guiding principles that we set in 2015, for as long as I've had children in the school system, which is about 15 years, children have been crossing the post road and 95 to go to their elementary schools. So while I completely understand what you're talking about, and I, and I understand the Sherman community and their concerns, because I think if you're there, you certainly don't want to change it, but I think one of the rationales behind the board saying, well, we have this in here, but, so does that mean we're going to redistrict those kids who go to Mill Hill and live by Sasko Hill Road? Have them not go to Mill Hill anymore, because we, we want to make sure that they stay outside? Because, let's face it, because there is only one elementary school south of the post road, there is absolutely no physical way that someone isn't going to be crossing a post road in 95. If we had a second elementary school south of the post road, we'd be able to do that. But if you think of the breadth and depth of that neighborhood, there are three elementary schools that have the beach area, or south of the post road, have students there. So, I think that, that's the rationale behind that, and, and you can debate whether or not it's something that needs to be factored into future decisions, but the reason why it was considered to be kind of an outlier in that discussion is because we are already, if that is a rule, we are breaking that rule and have been breaking that rule for 15 years.
Well, I, I don't know what you're going to say, but I mean, if you're going to come up with guidelines of what we think is the best for our students in the school system, I hope you would not take a best-case scenario guideline for what works best for kids off the table, be, just because we don't do that now. I hope you would decide your guidelines based on what would be the best way to desire, if you're going to do K through 12. Then, then as a parent, tell me what you think the guideline should be. Don't tell me, well, we already crossed the post road, because I, I don't see that as a good solution. But just because we do it, I hope you won't say that we should not factor that into what we decide.
No, and I'm not saying that. All I'm saying is that it seemed, the discussion at the time, and you can go back and look at the time step in the meeting, it was a fairly lengthy discussion, saying that while it's not as if we were going to go out of our way to do, have more students crossing the post road in either direction for that matter, or 95, or any, or Black Rock Turnpike, there are students who cross Black Rock Turnpike every day to go to school. So, that, that was the rationale behind it. I am not advocating to do more of it. I am simply saying that was the rationale behind that discussion.
Ms. Raisa?
Yeah, and I just, I can speak to that, because I am one of the families in Riverfield that has to cross the post road, drive under 95, and go there. And I'm also a parent of a child who will go to Riverfield in a couple of years that goes to a Child's Garden, which is at the old, Old Field School. And I'm able to walk her to school and pick her up, which is great, and I love it, and boy, do I wish my son could go there. I really do. I wish it was still a school, I wish it wasn't the senior center in the Child's Garden. But I can tell you, one, I didn't have a choice, because that's where it was, but to Mrs. Gerber's point, I, that guiding principle is being broken for myself. And I will tell you that while I would love to be able to walk to school, I wouldn't trade my son's experience this year in kindergarten for anything. You know? If, if in a comprehensive redistricting he was moved, yeah, I, I would not be happy. But I do have faith that, as has been said multiple times, all of our schools are, are excellent. And while I totally hear and understand everything that's been said tonight, and I'm not saying I disagree with it, but when it comes to this guiding principle, I was one of the ones that said, why is it there if we're not going to abide by it? Because let's face it, we are not going to be able to abide by rivers and highways and railroad tracks. We just can't. So, if we were to put it in as a guiding principle, we're going into it knowing that we're going to have to violate it. Now, that being said, I don't think, at least for me, in the thought process of removing it, by any means meant that I want to have that as a justification to do that to anyone else, i.e. Sherman District. But I just want to be clear, where I come from, you know, I'm a parent of a kid that crosses the post road every day. He's on a bus. He loves the bus. You know, he gets mad if I have to take him to school. So, there, listen, I want to say again, I hear everything that has been said tonight, and I take public comment and emails and everything very seriously, and I really take it to heart. You know, this, this job as a board of ed official is very time-consuming, and a lot goes into it, and, but I don't need a thank you. I don't need someone to say, we know how much time you do. I signed up for it. And in signing up for it, it means tackling very difficult decisions, like finding a new superintendent, like dealing with racial imbalance, dealing with facility utilization, all of this together. So I want to tell you that I'm committed to working for all students in this district, no matter who they are, what needs they have to be served, and I just, I want you to know that.
Mr. Peterson?
Ms. Raisa, thank you very much for that, by the way. That was spirited and to the point, and I think we all, we all feel that in a lot of, in a lot of ways. One thing that I wanted to add to this particular discussion, since Old Field has come up a couple of times, the public may, may not know this, especially if they're kind of tuning in now to the redistricting issue, you might be asking, why aren't we considering reopening Old Field? It's there, it's an elementary school, it's kind of in the right place, so, you know, our forefathers made the wise decision to put it, put it there. There's a lot of reasons not to, primarily because it's in a flood plain. Since it's been closed, to bring it back up to code would be extraordinarily expensive. One of the planning documents we saw proposed that it might require a six-foot berm around the entire building, in order to make that happen, since it's a brick building that can't really be raised, as so many other structures in the, in the beach area have been. Also, the issue of land that I keep coming back to comes up because the senior center is there. The senior center deserves a space, and has been there for many years, and it remains an open question whether we can find a place somewhere else in town to have a dedicated senior center, but that's an issue that the town is grappling with as well. It's, we, we're not faced with a lot of choices when it comes to Old Field, which is unfortunate, but those are the facts on the ground.
Thank you. Ms. Lieper?
Just one other comment to piggyback off of Ms. Raisa's, because I'm also one of those families who'll have to cross the post road to send my child to Riverfield, and I think, my opinion, when we make a guiding principle that we know we can't keep, then we are signaling to those children and families who are in violation of that principle, that your child's educational experience is somehow suboptimal. And I also don't think that that is what we, as a district, want to be signaling to those families. All of our elementary schools are wonderful, and my, my son's about to go to kindergarten, and as of right now, the only thing he's excited about is riding the bus, about going to kindergarten. And, and I feel also, as a working mom, thankful to have a bus, because I would otherwise likely be a, a parent who would have to drive my child to school to drop them off. Not to say that we are intentionally moving children unnecessarily, but I do think we need to be mindful of setting rules that we know we can't have apply to all children and all families.
Thank you. Last speaker.
All right, I'll be brief. Andrew Marchenko, 817 Riverside Drive, so I complete the cycle of all the families that were there. I don't think you need to wait for the warm weather. If you want to see a slew of kids going in the morning, just sit at South Benson and Riverside Drive. And I know, at least with my child, there's at least six families that are en masse going. The first day of school was just a beautiful thing, just seeing kids going down there. That's why we moved there. I'm not going to repeat why everybody has moved into Fairfield. I will go back to the aspect of disruption, and I just did some basic math. I know everybody, you're dealing with a lot.
Sorry to interrupt you. Could you mind just speaking a little bit more into the microphone, because you are on TV?
Okay. I just want to talk a little bit about disruption and recognize the challenges that you face, and I, I know from the bottom of your hearts, you're trying to do the right thing, but I did some basic math of, of my kindergartner, Will, who's at Sherman right now, and Patrick will be going next year and joining Will at Sherman. Takes them nine minutes from home to get to Sherman, all right? If they take a bus, just going out there and saying, that's probably going to be about a 30 to 40-minute kind of journey, right? That's an extra hour that each child is going to have every day, which goes out to five hours, and I take the train almost every day to the city, so I do this math on a regular basis. That's two hours, that's going to be an hour a day, five hours a week, 20 hours a month. Multiply that by nine, this is very loose math, and I'll get chastised for using loose math, but do the math, that's, I don't know, eight days, seven days, whatever it happens to be, nine days of spending time on a bus. I know from being a parent for the first time, seeing my kid, we, we overtaxed Will, we sent him to La Crosse, he did taekwondo, we were the excited parents, got him in all in activities. I know how time-consuming just going to school and doing those activities are. Now you're taking a nine-minute commute every day, and you're going to tack that time on, on top of all the other activities. It's going to have a negative. I'll tell you right now, it is going to have an impact. I know you know that. I'm just putting it out there and just saying, when you're thinking about those guiding principles, and you're thinking about disruption, I don't think you can dismiss it and say that everyone is disrupted, therefore it's not important. I think there are degrees of disruption. I, for, for the life of me, I can't wrap my head around a nine-minute walk turning into a bus ride, right? I mean, I'll be honest about that. That's all I've got to say. So, you've got a tough job. I really appreciate it. I know you guys are tired, you feel like you're probably beat up, but it's something that's near and dear for me. I know it's one person here, but I'm sure that there's probably a bunch of other people that share that same sentiment.
Thank you. Ms. Maxon-Kinelli?
Just one bit of feedback. I want to, and unfortunately, of course, the room is now almost empty, so I hope Sherman parents who are here will, can communicate this back, but I can definitely attest to the being tired right now, but what I want to just say is a word of tremendous appreciation is for the absolute civility with which this entire conversation has been conducted. This is something people will feel passionately about. It involves their children. We have to be, we're looking at the whole district, you're thinking of your child, and there's nothing wrong with that dynamic. And yet, I think this has been a thoroughly productive conversation, and in advocating for yourselves, I, I just, I just want to say my thanks to the few people left in the room, and to anyone else who pays attention, of how grateful I am that this has been the nature of the conversation. We want to learn from you, we all value this feedback, but being able to do it through a civil conversation is going to be vital to whatever we ultimately end up with, so I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Vitale?
I was thinking the same thing, and also in terms of our children, and as we go through this very difficult time, as the adults in the room, I think that we could help minimize the stress and anxiety that might come with the change. So I think that we just need to be cognizant of that as we're talking about this, that don't necessarily make it a bad thing, that it could be an opportunity, and I, I say this, adult to adult, that kids pick up the anxiety and the stress.
Well, I mean, that's everyday living.
Every day of their parent, but, you know, for this. I had somebody call me today, and her daughter came home from school saying that all of her friends told her she's going to go to Fairfield Woods Middle School, and she was distraught, based on just rumors that she heard and chatter around the neighborhood. So I think that we, it's difficult, nobody wants to disrupt the lives of kids, but unfortunately, we need to have the conversation and look forward and look forward to having it with you, and I thank you for sticking with us until almost a quarter to 11, and please just keep on being engaged.
Thank you. I'd like to thank all the members of the public that spoke tonight, and since public dialogue is closed, I'll turn it back over to the chairman.
And I would just like to thank you, Mr. Thetson, for serving tonight as our moderator. I appreciate your time, and thank you. And with that, can I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Asa, second, Mr. Peterson, all in favor? Nine zero, we are adjourned.